Good evening. I'm calling the April 29th, 2020 Select Board Meeting to order. First, a few logistics. First one being getting the slide to move. We've been broadcast on RCTV, Verizon Channel 33, Xfinity Channel 22. Also available on Facebook Live, the link you can get from RCTV. This is a virtual meeting to model and exhibit proper social distancing, of course. We are accepting public comments by email. Please send an email to selectboard@ci.redding.ma.us. We will try to monitor comments during the meeting. And for the public comments, we ask that you include your full name and address. No disparaging comments. Please limit the size and content of your email so that it can be read in less than two minutes. We are always open to suggestions on how to improve our meetings and participation. The town of Reading is working hard to provide resources to the community, especially for those who are hard hit by the COVID-19 pandemic. Please reach out if you need help, are willing to help, or have questions. The emails and phone numbers are all listed here on this slide. Once again, I want to thank all the first responders and other essential workers that are working so hard to help us survive and thrive in this crisis, if thrive is the right word. We will get through this together. All these folks are true heroes for us. I want to briefly mention that next Wednesday, May the 6th, is National Nurses Day. I'd like to give a shout out to all of our town and school nurses. Thank you so much for your service to the town. And to nurses who live in town, work in town, assist people from town, and in fact, all nurses. Thank you all very much. Tonight, in terms of agenda, we have our state legislative team. Senator Jason Lewis, Representatives Rich Haggerty and Brad Jones are joining us. I'll ask them to speak momentarily, right after we walk through the rest of the agenda. Please feel free to email questions that you may have for our legislative team. After the team speaks, they'll be followed by presentations on our COVID-19 response. First from Emmy Dove, Chair of the Board of Health, and then many members of the command team will be offering updates. We will then have public comment, followed by a final review of the liaison assignments. Next, we'll discuss the RMLD dividend payment and renewal of the 20-year agreement. Vanessa and Karen will lead us in the discussion, and John Stempak, the Chair of the RMLD Commissioners, is on in the meeting with us, and he'll join us for that discussion as well. We'll then talk about future meeting topics, approve meetings, approve some minutes, talk about some minutes, and then we will go from there. So with that, let me first introduce Senator Jason Lewis, who'll be followed by Representative Haggerty and then Representative Jones. I shared a few questions with these folks, and I know they have their own comments. Again, if the public has questions for them, please email them to us. Hopefully, they can answer some of those questions. Senator Lewis, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, Select Board members and town leaders and members of the community. I hope that you and your loved ones are all safe and well. And I want to echo what the chairman just said in terms of our gratitude for our Reading first responders, for our local public health staff, for our medical professionals, and all of our frontline workers who are doing extraordinary work during this crisis. You have our profound gratitude. At the state government level, myself and Representative Jones and Representative Haggerty and our colleagues, working very closely with Governor Baker and his team, we've been pursuing what I would describe as kind of a two-pronged strategy to deal with this crisis. First is that we are taking a lot of steps, as you're well aware, to contain the spread of the virus and minimize hospitalizations and deaths. Bottom line, this is all about saving lives in our communities and in Massachusetts. And I really, and I know, and we all know, that the steps we've been taking around physical distancing and hygiene and many others are really making a difference. And our local hospitals are doing a great job preparing for the surge and managing through it so that everyone who needs care, whether it's for COVID-19 or for another health emergency, you know, is able to get the care that they that they need. And we're going to continue to take these steps to minimize the spread of the virus. The second strategy that we've been pursuing is to mitigate as much as we can the devastating economic impact that this crisis is having on our communities, on our residents, on our small businesses, our nonprofits, our municipalities, and others. Our state government and our federal government, you know, have been working hard, and we've taken numerous actions to seek to address the crisis. Let me just quickly highlight a few of these, and I'm sure the other members of the delegation who've worked hard on many of these pieces of legislation will touch on them as well. First of all, unemployment benefits have been strengthened and expanded to an unprecedented degree, actually, so that virtually all workers who are laid off or furloughed or see their earnings reduced can access assistance through unemployment benefits. We've also taken a lot of steps to try to help our small businesses, obviously, our restaurants and nonprofits and others that have needed emergency assistance as well. Emergency funding has been provided for public health purposes, for hospitals, nursing homes, and other healthcare providers. We've also provided legislation to help our cities and towns to give you budgeting flexibility, permitting relief, and the ability to postpone the spring town elections and town meetings. We extended both the state and federal tax filing deadlines, placed a moratorium on evictions and foreclosures for renters, homeowners, and also for small businesses as well. Liability protections for healthcare workers during this crisis. We also took action to cancel MCAS testing for the remainder of the school year. We heard loud and clear from our teachers and parents and superintendents about that. We also authorized electronic notarization for real estate and other business transactions. That's important for those sectors of our economy to continue to function. We know there's a lot more we need to do, working in partnership with you all. So some of the things we're doing are further work to protect the residents and staff in our nursing homes and other facilities that house vulnerable populations. We're looking at ways to strengthen this, our social safety net for low-income families. We are working on legislation right now that I hope we will have done next week that will enable Reading and other towns to hold remote town meetings in the spring, if you so desire. We're also working on legislation to enable more options for voting by mail and early voting, and to protect poll workers for the fall elections, the September 1st state primary and the general election. And we know that you, in case there is going to be a municipal special election in the summer in Reading, we know that we need to also include the flexibility that you need for that election as well. And then lastly, just wanted to mention that the Education Committee, and I chair that committee in the Senate, is going to be holding a special oversight hearing next week, Wednesday, to understand better how remote learning is going across all districts in Massachusetts. So members of the public are welcome, will be welcome to tune in, and we should be able to learn a lot about the successes and the challenges we're facing to educate our students while our schools are closed. Just wanted to wrap up with giving you a brief budget outlook, and I'm sure Representative Jones will, and Representative Haggerty will have more to say here. For the current fiscal year that we're in right now, fiscal year 20, we don't expect any 9C budget cuts. We think we have the capacity to manage through the shortfall in state revenues for this fiscal year. For the next fiscal year that starts July 1st, fiscal year 21, I cannot sugarcoat it. The outlook is grim. The normal budget process is delayed, probably by several months over what it would typically be. The House and Senate and the Baker administration held a new consensus revenue hearing on April 14th. We essentially had to restart the state budget process. And according to the experts who testified, the state can expect a revenue loss in the next fiscal year of anywhere between $4 billion and $6 billion compared to what we were expecting just prior to the pandemic. That's about a 13% to an 18% reduction in state revenues. So that is dramatic. I mean, that's, put that in context, that's quite a bit more than during the Great Recession about a decade ago. These experts also expect that the unemployment rate in Massachusetts could reach as high as 20%, which I think we all recognize is just devastating. We haven't seen an unemployment rate that high in any of our living memories. The state's Rainy Day Fund will help, and it's a very, a good thing that the state has been prudent in our budgeting over the last decade. But the big unknown right now is how much additional assistance we will be getting from the federal government for the state and for our cities and towns. We're expecting that to be included in the next federal stimulus bill that Congress is working on. And I really want to thank our congressional delegation. They fought hard for us and for all the, all the many needs that are out there. But we really need them to come through in the next federal stimulus bill to provide funding for states and municipalities. So that is a big unknown still right now. We hope to provide more guidance to Reading for your budgeting process and to our other communities regarding what you can expect in Chapter 78 for schools and also unrestricted local aid. Those are the two big local aid accounts. We know that's critical to help you build your budget. So as soon as we have more information, the delegation will certainly provide that to you, and we're hopeful to be able to do that within, within the next month. So I'll just wrap up by saying that the partnership between local government and our state government, you know, is always important, but it's more important than ever. I think we would agree in these very difficult times. And we, I know we'll all continue to work closely, continue to work closely together to first and foremost, keep our residents safe and to mitigate as much as we can the economic hardship from this pandemic. Thank you again for this opportunity to join you this evening. I'm happy to take questions.
Jason, do you want to take questions directly, or shall we hear from the representatives first?
I think probably maybe hear from the other members of the delegation, and then maybe we can take questions together.
Great. That sounds great. Brad, do you want to lead off?
Sure. Thanks for the opportunity to join you tonight. I think Jason touched on a lot of the highlights. I would say that I think one of the critical decisions that we made in the Commonwealth was, he mentioned the Rainy Day Fund, and that has already been kind of given accolades to Massachusetts that we're in a better position, although no state's probably in a great position, but that we're in a far better position to deal with some of the impacts that we're going to see on a revenue front. I think next week, we'll probably get the first full glimpse of the bad news as April's revenues come in. And while we've put off the tax filing deadline to July 15th for the state, obviously, we've seen in every, basically, every other category of income, whether it's sales tax, meals tax, hotel, everything down. So that'll give us a first kind of full month glimpse. March revenues were a little stilted because some of those are collections that came in in February that are recorded in March. So that's going to be the first thing. And I think as Jason touched on, we've obviously seen the federal government step in in a couple of areas, and I know there's at least one more, hopefully, big aid package that's being discussed, which has hopefully a sizable amount of money set aside for states and municipalities to hopefully backfill some of that shortfall in revenues. But as I think he said, you can't sugarcoat it. There's no, there's only, there's no good news out there. Depending on what the federal government does, it only makes the bad news a little bit less bad. But our Rainy Day Fund is, you know, a very healthy number. That's critical. We have passed, I think, as Jason said, a number of pieces of legislation that is sort of, let's say, have some municipal focus in parks. We've done a tremendous amount on the unemployment, not only from traditional unemployment and accessing that system, but because of some of the federal expansion, built on a whole new platform that just went online about a week ago, and has had hundreds of thousands of people sign up. And to put it in context, to take an agency that about two and a half months ago had 50 people working and taking maybe 7,000 or 8,000 claims in a week, is now an agency that's shifted over and have about 1,000 people working seven days a week, dealing with hundreds upon hundreds of thousands of claims, and up to the point where I think they were making about like 10,000 calls back a day to try to get back to people to make sure they had the right information, to make sure they were filling the right data. And it's truly been, you know, and that's just a glimpse of the Herculean effort in one aspect. And I was on a phone call with DCF workers who were trying to make sure children in need are protected. And they're every much on the front line, too, going into homes and dealing, DDS workers dealing with group homes, people that are dealing with SNAP benefits. So they're part of the frontline workers, along with our police, our fire, our nurses, our medical professionals, and it's amazing. And, you know, I know there's a concern about the PPE, and obviously, we had an inadequate supply, and we had an inadequate supply, and a small university needed it. And now we have an expanded universe that need it. And while supply is maybe better than where it was, certainly, and we've seen some great companies in our Commonwealth adjust and get into the manufacturing, something they probably never even envisioned making, and now, you know, staffing up, gearing up, and our, and I think sort of wherever we're headed, that's going to become a permanent part, or at least a fixture in our, our life going forward for the foreseeable future. You know, I know there's some concern about the election. I know Jason touched on it. There was an election bill being talked about. The Secretary of State has his thoughts. I think he's way in and filing a piece of legislation in a few weeks. We have some special state elections underway right now for some vacant legislative seats that are kind of experimenting with, we expanded sort of how absentee ballots can be applied. We let a sort of mail-in and enhanced early voting. So I think some of the experiences of that may be replicated for the fall. I know the mailing is an issue that we probably have to get around and how that's handled. I'd like to have a discussion, quite frankly, with our town clerks and how that's all going to work. You know, there are just, there's so many different aspects to this, you know, and there's so many tremendous, wonderful stories of people coming forward in the community and the Commonwealth and the country. You know, it's good to have a delegation that works together. You know, I'm in touch with Bob and the chief. And whenever, you know, I'm needed, or if they need anything, please feel free to reach out. And that goes to for anybody in the community. We've had sadly, you know, dozens of people in the community reach out for issues that they've had to deal with with the state, some of them traditional issues, dealing with the registry of motor vehicles, but most often unemployment questions. And obviously, work continues on Route 28, and we know that's generated some, some questions and issues in the community as well. And people haven't been shy about expressing their opinions. So again, available for any questions. I do think that, that we want to get you some numbers real quick, but I would certainly say, whatever predisposition you have to be relative to conservative budgeting, it's probably a good year to double down on that. And I don't say that to be alarmist, but having been a municipal official, I know it's a lot easier to add back in than it is to take out after the fact. And we kind of sought through a million good ideas that we have right now. There's, there's dozens of pieces of legislation that when we read them, they sound good. Most of them all cost money, and we have to match those desires up with our resources, figuring in what the resources we get from the federal government are, what are the resources we have at the state level, resources at the municipal level, and try to patch that together and have those two lines meet in a place that's sustainable while meeting the most critical needs of the people of the Commonwealth and our communities. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll pass the camera back, I guess.
Thanks, Brad. Rich, can we ask you to make some comments, please?
Sure. Thanks so much to everybody for your continued good work, and particularly the public safety officials who've been working so hard over the course of, particularly the last few months here, journeys unprecedented times. I won't give the full synopsis again. I think that both the Senator and Representative Jones accurately kind of described what the state has been going through, and I know you all are doing your work, following kind of what we're doing and communicating with us, letting us know what you need. I will say, just as a former local official, something that, you know, I've been talking with folks about is, you know, the important role that supplemental budgets could play in the coming year to make sure that, you know, that we are being conservative with our budgeting measures over the course of the next several months, and that, you know, you are going to be able to add back in, you know, resources, hopefully, as the economy begins to rebound. I think the state's going to take a real serious look at adding more supplemental budgets and as we get a better picture of what we're looking at from a financial standpoint view. As Jason said, you know, when you're talking about $4 billion to $6 billion hole, at the end of the day, you know, the feds are going to have to come to the table. They're going to have to step up. They're going to have to write a check and support our efforts here. Because, you know, without that, then the picture's going to be that much more dire. So I think we're going to get a better picture of that over the course of the next several weeks, I think, as the feds hopefully dig in. And then beyond that, I just want to talk a little bit about, you know, kind of the services that our offices have been providing. And I think that, you know, we've been in constant communication with a lot of different folks in the community, whether it's helping with the Y benefits, or whether it's helping businesses even navigate many of the federal programs through the SBA. You know, that's a real big part of making sure that we're in a position to have our economy rebound and come back in a manner that, you know, is able to get us back kind of with our feet underneath us. And Massachusetts is well positioned, right? We're a state that's, you know, competitive in so many different areas, particularly life sciences, hospitals, you know, technology and others. And because of that, fortunately, I think that once we get past this, I think Massachusetts is going to respond and be in a better position than most other states. So that's, that's some good news for us to be looking at. And again, we are seeing some positive things happen out there in our communities, and I see it in Reading all the time as well. So, you know, people are responding, people are contributing. And so as challenging as these moments are, I would mention that, you know, we are seeing a lot of positive things, and I think that we should all continue to, to look at, look for those as we, as we deal through these challenging times.
Great.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Rich. Board members, any questions for legislators here?
We've answered everything aboard you to death.
Never known you all to be shy.
But you got my questions in advance, so, to be fair. Karen, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming, and we really appreciate how hard you're working for us. And I know you're having to do this from many different angles. One of the things I was wondering that I didn't hear any of you mention was whether there's any legislation to expand testing. Wouldn't it be great if we could get some help, just like we give seniors and other community members flu shots? Is there any talk about spending money on testing and helping communities do a much larger job of testing? Or are we thinking that's going to be through your primary care doctors?
Anyone want to tackle that?
Well, I can just, I'm happy to at least make a few comments anyways. I think that, you know, while those conversations, I think, have a time and place, I think that one of the things we're, that at least that I've, you know, read quite a bit about is some of the, you know, that a lot of these tests that are out there right now are insufficient. They don't, they don't really do the job, particularly the antibody testing. And that's something that we want to make sure that if we're going to be spending money on, you know, increased testing across the board, that, that in fact, we're not getting false positives, and that we're not sending, getting bad data. We want to make sure we have the best data available to us to be able to actually make informed decisions. And I mean, I will say, obviously, the partners in health effort that's going on right now with regards to tracking, that's ramping up, and I think that's a real positive. I think that that's going to give us a much better idea of who in fact is infected, of course, and who they've been in touch with. And that's going to provide an enormous amount of data to better understand where, where COVID-19 is and where it's going, how it's being moved around, all of those things. So I think that the, that effort is really, really important to kind of how we tackle this disease.
I would only add, Mr. Chairman, that the testing, you know, it seems like it's hard to remember what date is, but, you know, back even a few weeks ago, when, you know, testing was a couple hundred tests a day, now we're approaching 9, 10,000 tests a day. So I would, I would agree, Karen, that, you know, the goal needs to be increased testing. And obviously, the first place was people that were high risk and people that were on the front lines, but expanding that out. But as Rich said, you want to make sure you have a testing regimen that's scalable, affordable, and reliable so that you're not getting false positives and false negatives and creating the false sense of, of security. And the expanded testing is one of the reasons why sometimes you see the numbers jump all over the place. You know, you test the high-risk population, the numbers are high, but as you kind of go out and and maybe start to reach into a part of the public that may be not as high-risk, those numbers come down. That's going to give us more reliable data about where we're at truly in dealing with this pandemic. But I would agree, I think it's a valid point. I think it's something clearly we're interested in. You know, the part of the problem originally was part of testing was these swabs, and some of the materials from the swabs were in short supply, and now that's kind of ratcheting up. You know, some of the places we relied on for some of these things were China and Italy, you know, which are obviously kind of the beginning of the pandemic and another country that sort of led the way of creating the idea of how bad it could really be. So I think we're trying to create, you know, some of the lessons from this is hopefully going forward, having a home-based reply and ability to deal with this and not necessarily saying we have to be reliant on for some of these critical things, you know, foreign sources, or at least make sure you have a stockpile that's or at least make sure you have a stockpile, um, that's a little bigger than it was.
Thank you.
Ann, did I see? Sorry, I cut you with a glass in your hand. Did I see you had your hand up, Ann?
Uh, no, I think I was, uh, going to comment that, that Karen had her hand up.
Oh, great.
But thank you for this allegation for being here.
Yeah, thanks. Carlo, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah. Hi. Um, thanks for coming, gentlemen. Senator Lewis, you mentioned that, uh, important meeting on the 14th, when they were crunching the numbers, uh, the four to six billion, the unemployment. How often does that team plan to meet to update and revise? Cause I'm guessing the states aren't going to get one lump check. I'm sure they're going to do it, are they going to do it quarterly? Are you going to talk to the congressional and, and US senators? Like how often are we going to get updates on, you know, how bad it is?
Uh, I, I don't mind jumping in, Mr. Chairman. I'll defer to Jason if you, but I don't say-
Go ahead, Brad.
-federal funding and, and that, you know, some of the money comes in into different buckets. Uh, and I think we're going to get, once we start getting, you know, April's full picture, um, and then hopefully we're able to tie that into, um, by the time we get into, into, you know, mid, uh, mid-May, uh, a plan for hopefully gradual reopening, um, that we'll get to see those kind of lines and see what we really, uh, what we really have locally, so to speak, statewide, um, but also a better idea of federal money. And some of that federal money may flow directly through to cities and towns. So it may flow through to, um, different specific like let's say EOPS that deals with, um, you know, public safety, national guard issues. Uh, it may through, flow through public health. Um, there's a bunch of different areas that it may flow, uh, through either directly or through the state, uh, that can pass through. Some of it may be reimbursing identified expenditures. So obviously I'm sure your finance team is trying to track everything that was things otherwise would not have been spent but for dealing with the pandemic, uh, and trying to identify those. I know, I know the state is.
Exactly. And, and then the point I was, uh, just trying to make was, you know, in an ordinary year, back in December, so this was, would have been last December, the, the House of Representatives, the Senate and the, uh, Baker administration, you know, come together, have a process where they hear from economists and other experts. And that's all about trying to figure out how much revenue the state can expect in the next fiscal year in order to build its budget. And that's the way it always works. And the fact that we had to essentially throw that all out, you know, because everything's up in the air now and there's so much uncertainty, we're in a new world. We basically had to restart that process on April 14th, which is unprecedented. So that was the point I was trying to get across is this is, this is really not something we've seen before, that we had to sort of throw, tear up the work that had been done over the last four months to start building a state budget for the new fiscal year, which begins July 1st. And we had to re, you know, restart that process, you know, mid-April. And now that, now we're working, uh, to try to figure out, you know, again, what, what can the state expect in, in revenues, sales route, sales tax, income tax and so on. And then we'll be able to build a state budget and determine, you know, again, how much local aid and chapter 70, you know, and all the other, you know, important, uh, services and programs that, uh, that we, that we need to fund. So that, that's what I was trying to, I explained.
The only acclamation point I would add on to that, Jason, is we're also, you know, unlike, let's say a natural disaster, you know, a big snowstorm where you feel like there's a, a defined beginning and a defined end, um, there, there's no end, there's no period on this problem yet. So it makes it very hard or that much harder to kind of identify, quantify, uh, the magnitude of the problem. Um, and then obviously the speculation about, well, if you come out too soon, you have a recurrence, is there a recurrence in the fall? Um, what are the things that you need to do to avoid those? So unfortunately, um, you know, we're not going to have that clearly defined endpoint as well as an endpoint that doesn't probably mean that everything, you know, the new normal is different than the old normal.
Yep. That's a really important point.
Vanessa, go ahead.
Thanks, Mark. Um, Jason, Rich, Brad, just want to thank you for being here. It's, it is helpful to hear directly from you. Um, my question is, one of the things I raised early on with our town manager is that the biggest expense that residents have, um, that, that goes to, to the town is our property taxes. And would it be possible for the town to create some kind of deferment of payments for those that are, um, find themselves unemployed and, and struggling to make those payments? And what I learned is that there are significant limitations on what the town can individually do, that much of that is, is, um, structured by the state or dictated by the state. Uh, are any efforts being made to allow towns to create their own programs or to broaden what exceptions might be for programs for delaying property taxes?
Uh, I personally, I will have to take a look at it. Vanessa, I don't know of anything off the top of my head, other than, you know, we sort of kind of delayed paying the taxes and this and that. Um, but obviously we would probably have to look at some kind of a, of a program, sort of like, you know, Reading's tax deferral that might be customized to Reading or maybe something that's a little more à la carte that you pick and do certain things. But obviously it creates potentially a cash flow situation on the municipal level, depending on how aggressive or generous, uh, a community is with that. Um, obviously as Jason touched on earlier, we did an evictions and foreclosures piece and, and, and hopefully, you know, obviously that may not relate into property taxes, but, um, the idea being that, you know, it, it is certainly worth looking at. Um, but to the extent that's a program that requires the state to say, well, we'll provide upfront money so you can provide that relief. Um, the state's ability to sort of embark on new, new areas of, of, of cost is going to be beyond limited. I do think there's some merit depending, I mean, obviously you guys have a reserve. I, I had this conversation earlier that in terms of doing your own municipal budgeting, you know, people who can't pay their property tax bill, I think is usually in a mark, uh, reserve or willing to abate it and whatever the account was. As I recall, there's some sort of built-in, okay, some people aren't going to pay. That may be a number that you carry to hide, a number which doesn't, doesn't help budgeting wise, um, but does recognize there's going to be some increased number in the community that are going to struggle. Um, but I think it's worth, and I'll, I'll, uh, we'll take a look and see if there's something out there, either in, in DC, underway in Massachusetts, or maybe that some other state has come up with. And certainly if you find something, please feel free to send it along.
Yeah, I would just, I would just say, just a, this is a really important point to find different ways to give relief to our, to our residents, um, given the very tough times they're going through. I just wanted to remind folks, the, um, municipal legislation that the state, uh, passed, Governor Baker signed, um, maybe now three weeks ago or so, did give, um, towns the ability to, to at least push back the, uh, uh, that would it be the Q2, I guess, um, it would be the May, it was the May 1st, a due date for property taxes to push that back under local option and also to waive any, um, you know, penalties or, or interest if, if somebody did pay late. So we did actually include some relief in that, in that bill. And I believe Reading, uh, you adopted that, right? Local option. But I know you're asking about going beyond that and we will take that back. That's, uh, that's good feedback. See if there's any options.
Thanks very much.
Any other questions from the board? Not seeing any. I don't see any public questions at the moment either. Uh, if the public has any questions they'd like to, to share, please send them in by email now.
Mr. Chairman, just as a moment, just a, a, a shout out to the first responders in Reading. I know you had a terrible fire at Meadowbrook, uh, and, um, it's a tragedy, but it was, uh, incredible to see the amount of mutual aid arrived on scene and, and Chief Clark, because I didn't want to interrupt, Chief Burns was kind enough and to see, um, you know, the communities I represent all there, but far beyond that, uh, responding to that situation. And obviously a terrible situation for Reading and Meadowbrook. Fortunately, no injuries or loss of life. Um, but in, I think that was, um, symbolic of the coming together, uh, in difficult times that we see on a routine basis, um, through the communities I represent throughout the Commonwealth. Um, but I think it was, I just wanted to mention and say thanks for a job well done.
Thanks Brad.
I will just, I, I do just want to add a couple of things. So, you know, I think it's very helpful for us to hear from everybody, uh, within town government about, uh, you know, some of your concerns and whatnot, uh, as, as pieces of legislation. I mean, right now they're moving pretty quick, but, uh, you know, as we, you know, as an example, vote by mail, uh, where people are at on that and, and what does that look like, uh, for Reading? What are some of your concerns specifically about what that would look like and how that would be managed? Uh, so somebody like the town clerk talking with us about that and, and expressing that to us is important. Um, and, you know, if, if there's other tools that you think you need in your toolbox, uh, that we're not thinking of, uh, let us know about that. Reach out, communicate and we'll do whatever we can to try to make sure that you've got what you need in order to get through this. I think that, you know, a lot of folks have used the term, uh, you know, kind of everything's on the table right now. So this is an opportunity to kind of, uh, throw some things against the wall and say, hey, let's, let's see if this can work right now. Is this something that's a good idea, uh, that could work for, for Reading or perhaps other municipalities as well? So, uh, just keep that communication flowing, uh, and, uh, and keep us posted.
Will do. I guess, so thanks to, to the three of you, uh, for coming tonight, but, uh, even more broadly for working together so well for the town of Reading. We really appreciate that. Uh, we most certainly, uh, have some needs and we will not be shy in sharing them with you, but I think we've given you a flavor of some of them now. Um, and even though times are very uncertain, uh, and we appreciate other communities are facing the same things, um, we all need to work through this together. So we appreciate staying in close touch with you folks. So thank you.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
You are more than welcome to stay for as long as you choose in the meeting, but we appreciate you have other, other, uh, communities that you represent and need to take care of as well. So we thank you very much for joining.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so next on our list, I think we'll go to the COVID-19 update from Board of Health. Uh, so Emmy, would you like to take over from here?
Sure. Uh, so I'll start by, um, giving an update on our current numbers in Reading. So currently our, uh, cumulative cases is 219. Of those, 142 are active, 67 have recovered and there have been 10 deaths. Um, I did want to mention that the state actually allows, um, long-term care facilities and assisted living facilities to request partial or full facility testing once. Um, two facilities in Reading have done that and that has accounted for some of the jumps in numbers that we've seen over the last couple of weeks, for those of you who have been watching the numbers. Um, I also want to note that the actual number of cases, this has been stated before, but the actual number of cases in the general population is likely much higher than what is reported, um, due to mild or no symptoms and lack of access to testing. Um, so I think as most people are aware now, the, the major action we took, uh, recently was to put in place an order requiring face coverings in public buildings. This order was based on CDC and state guidance. The CDC guidance came on April 3rd and the state guidance followed shortly thereafter. Uh, this was based on the likelihood of asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic transmission. It's very difficult to assess, um, how, uh, how significant asymptomatic transmission is, uh, because we aren't testing asymptomatic individuals. Uh, right now, we are seeing them in the long-term, uh, care facilities and the, uh, assisted living facilities, at least asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic. So, uh, there's a chance that there will be data coming out of that actually. Um, why did we make the decision to take it from an advisory to an order data? Uh, so I have been working for the last 20 years in infectious disease research. Uh, this is my wheelhouse. I've been spending a lot of time, uh, looking through data and publications. And what I've noticed is that, um, there's been mounting evidence over the last two weeks that suggests pre-symptomatic transmission may be a significant driver in the spread of disease. We've seen this in, um, uh, papers in Nature Medicine. There was an article recently in the New England Journal of Medicine, among others. And there is a recent report out of Brigham and Women's Hospital where they, um, they changed their policy to have hospital staff, uh, almost all hospital staff wear masks regardless of whether they were having, uh, direct contact with, um, with patients. And they noticed a 50% drop in hospital transmission. Uh, I do want to say that wearing a face covering should not replace social distancing and hand washing. You should still keep up with that. Uh, that's very important. Um, we do want restrictions lifted as soon as possible. Um, we want businesses back up and running as soon as we can and for as long as we can. Um, we can't control the testing and hospital capacities, but one thing we can do is really try and limit transmission. And this seems like a reasonable step. I do want to note that we have a medical exemption in our order. Uh, there are individuals who for medical reasons cannot wear a face covering. They have, um, a pre-existing respiratory condition, for example. Um, you can't tell if somebody, you know, what somebody's medical background is just from looking at them. So we urge the public not to attempt to enforce this policy, this order themselves. Don't get into confrontations. If you have a concern or a complaint, please contact our health agent, Laura Vlasic. Um, that includes if you find that businesses aren't posting signage. She can be contacted through the town website or at 781-942-6653. Sorry, 6653. Um, health agent and our, um, health inspector are going to each open food establishment to verify client. Um, but I do want to note also that, uh, our health agent has, uh, been getting a surge in health complaints, um, including those not related to COVID, actually. So she's trying to juggle both the health complaints, which, which we typically like to prioritize as well as these, uh, more regular visits to food establishments. I also want to note that, uh, many other communities have similar orders in place or in the works and they may have different or even more severe, um, enforcement policies. I know some of them have, uh, fines up to a thousand dollars. Um, so communities that do have orders in place at the moment include, but are not limited to North Reading, Wakefield, Peabody, Middleton, Swampscott, Salem, Beverly, Needham, Brookline, Cambridge and Somerville. So, um, if you're going to one of those towns, you may want to, um, apprise yourself of their orders anyway. I have two more notes, not related to the face coverings. Um, one is that we anticipate and hope that our flu clinics will be popular once again this year. I, it's really important that people get their flu vex, vaccine this year. Um, our health agent is already preparing for this flu clinic. We're obviously going to go, uh, through, take some steps to make sure they're as safe as possible. Uh, and she has, uh, placed her first, uh, vaccine order already. Uh, and one other note is that the Board of Health, uh, will likely be discussing soon the possibility of allowing food establishments to serve as grocers while dine-in restrictions are in place. This was, um, an idea brought to us by, uh, Board Member Kevin Sexton. Um, he had seen another community doing this and Laura was in agreement that some establishments might likely be interested in having this, this avenue open. And that is it.
Great. Thanks Emmy. Board members, any questions for Emmy?
Emmy, I had a couple of questions relative to the mask order. Um, just wanted to clarify that children under the age of two should not be wearing masks.
Correct.
Uh, and I think I had read somewhere that it, uh, it could be enforced by way of a fine pursuant to Board of Health policies. And I wondered what that looks like. Would that be something that would be administered by the health agent and what, uh, what denomination?
Yeah. So that would be by the health agent and, um, it's, oh, let me look them up, but they're the, they're the, in the, it's in the bylaws, the Board of Health regulations. I think it's $50 for a first violation, um, a hundred dollars for a second and a hundred and 50 for a third, but I can verify that.
Thank you.
Hi Emmy. You, you included, well, when, when it was posted and then amended and you included the flyer for the language to post, uh, in a window on the door. How much time are you giving or how, what kind of bin with, does the department have to check the apartment buildings, check the numerous businesses we have in town and never mind the big box, maybe they've done it already, but I know when this was posted over the weekend and then updated, uh, I know social media is not the end-all, be-all, but there was a lot of discussion about, they seemed that it came out of nowhere, even though it didn't, but the notice of, well, this is what we have to do now and more so for the public entering a business. Um, you might be pumping gas outside and then go into the store and, you know, not have their mask with them. And so I don't know how much time you're giving to the businesses or has it been immediate?
Yeah, no, we're, we're- Yeah, no, we're allowing some time. We recognize that some businesses didn't get the notice right away. In fact, there are some businesses that the notice actually goes to a corporate office before it goes to the local office, so to the local store. So right now, the health agent is going around, anyone, and the inspector, anyone who doesn't have the posted sign is given a sign to post, and they're given the order, make, you know, explain the order to the business owners. So yeah, we're not enforcing on the first go-round, so.
Okay, thanks, Zach, because I think the general public at large, and I don't know how many are watching tonight, and not everyone's on social media, but what other ways of your messaging are you getting out there? Are there direct letters going out? Is it just visits? Is it, what other forms of communication? I know we've got a reverse 911 the other day, which is very helpful. Is there going to be another one in a week? And just some guidance there? So it gets, you keep on reinforcing it so the public knows.
So there was, there was a number of avenues of getting the information out. In fact, I think actually, I think Jean Delios has a list of all the different ways and all the different groups we got the information out to. I don't know if she wants to jump in, but, but, okay, thanks.
So the list that I've been keeping is sort of community updates as well as targeted updates. So the first one was when the Board of Health announced last Wednesday at the Select Board meeting about the facial covering policy. Then that followed by a blast that went out to the members of the Reading, North Reading Chamber. That was an email that was sent on the following day, which was April 23. On Monday, April 27, there was an email blast to all of the establishments with a food permit, and that was sent by the health agent. And as was noted, the inspection team is continuing to do their work in the food establishments, and that will include the facial covering policy. Then the next day, on April 28, I sent out a email to every construction, permitted construction site about the facial covering policy. Likewise, an email went out from my end to multifamily residences about the facial covering policy, and that was again on April 28. And that includes apartments, condominiums, senior housing, and subsidized housing. Then Reading Patch had a coverage on April 28. And FIRE is working very closely with us on some larger construction sites. They're doing site visits and inspection checks for COVID-19 compliance. So we feel that that is another very important component, and it's important that we're all collaboratively getting together to work the details of this, and FIRE has been enormously helpful. So thank you.
All right, Carl.
Well, me again. I know a few weeks ago, we spoke with, I don't know if it was you, Emmy, or Kevin, or who it was, about preemptive work to businesses that are closed. So to not delay them to get open. Has any of that been done yet? So anyone who wants to open, I'll give you an example. It's Biltmore, Maine, which has been closed for several weeks. And they say, okay, we want to reopen when the, when the state, you know, when Governor Baker says it's okay to open. Does the Board of Health have the bandwidth to, or the salons, or anywhere that needs to be inspected? Because we did speak about this a few weeks ago, to kind of get ahead of it. So we don't delay any business owner that wants to open. So has anything been done or discussed about that?
So Jean actually probably has good information for this as well. But yes, there is a plan, a plan in place to prioritize businesses. So they've broken the businesses up into a list of those that are currently open and those that are currently closed. And the ones that are currently open are going to get routine inspections now so that efforts can be focused on the closed businesses when it comes time to, when we know that they can open, right? So we can get out, straight out to those businesses, and the open businesses can take a backseat because they'll have already been inspected. Is that fair enough to say, Jean?
I spent a fair amount of time with the health agent and with Deputy Chief Jackson on Monday, just again, going over this through command so that we all have the same understanding. And we are focusing on the, what we're calling COVID checks as the top priority. And so all the work that's being done collaboratively with FIRE and health is making sure that safety and compliance with COVID-19 protocols is number one. And the establishments are being visited routinely, five and six a day, to make sure that's in place and being observed. And now with the facial covering policy, that will be part of that. Second priority is getting our plan in place for businesses that are sort of in a pending mode to get reopened. And whatever we can do to do some preliminary work with them now, or just be queued up and ready to go when we get the green light that they can open, we're working through that. And then the third priority is, again, to circle back to the establishments that are open, because they're open and they're operating, and seemingly, we haven't had any complaints. So we feel pretty confident that they're working well, and we'll get to them in that, in that order. But we do feel confident that we have a plan and we have the capacity. And now with some additional time extended, unfortunately, it's not great for everyone. But from a planning point of view, it gives us that much more time to execute.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just add, without stealing from Chief Burns, this thunder coming up, there are a lot of priorities that the command team is dealing with, and this is actually one of them. So it's very much on the radar. Other questions from the board? Karen?
Good question. I know Bob mentioned last week there were some masks on order. I was wondering if they have come in at this point or still waiting?
Some have come in, Bob. I don't know. I don't have a lot of details on masks.
This is on the agenda for a couple of topics later. Greg will give a full update.
Thanks.
Other questions from the board? No. All right. So let's kind of continue through command. Bob, you suggested maybe John would be next. Is that still the plan? Great. So Dr. Doherty, give it to you, please.
Great, thank you. And Mrs. Dowd is going to contribute to this part of the report also. So first of all, I want to echo what several others have said about public safety and all the work that they're doing in our nurses. I also want to give a shout out to some other unsung heroes that have been in our, been coming to work pretty much every day and either working collaboratively with the town, or have been on school sites, doing all kinds of different types of work to keep our buildings moving forward and our student needs moving forward. So that includes our facility staff, our custodians, food service technicians, and our nurses who have been working closely with the Public Health Department. So I want to thank them as well. I also want to thank our teachers and our administrators for the incredible amount of work that they have been doing in this challenging time with remote learning. And tomorrow night, at our school committee meeting, I'll be going into a lot more detail about the types of activities that are going on right now in our schools. Essentially, in the six weeks that we have been out, and it seems more than six weeks, but it has been six weeks, we've really been through three phases. In phase one, we prioritize student and staff safety, nutrition, and other foundational needs. That really was the first week to 10 days. Then, as we received more guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, we went into phase two, which is where we were establishing our, all of our remote learning platform, and started developing activities and having our teachers connect with students online. And now we're entering phase three, with knowing that school is going to be closed for the rest of the year, phase three, and again, using guidance from the state. It's how do we continue that learning? How do we deepen that learning? And how do we build that platform so there's more what's called live learning going on with the, or synchronous learning going on between teachers and students? So that's what we're in the process of doing right now. We're working very closely with the teachers and administrators to make that happen. We are now focused on a lot of other things. Mrs. Dowd will go into some detail on some of those. But certainly, what's in everyone's mind is graduation. What's that going to look like? I know Mrs. Boynton, our high school principal, is working closely with her counterparts in the Middle Sex League to try to put together the best possible graduation and graduation activities for our class of 2020. We're also taking a look at what is summer programming going to look like, particularly our students with disabilities? And what is school going to look like in next September? These are all certainly questions that we have, but these are things that we have been planning, begun a planning process for. So with that, I'm going to turn it over now to Mrs. Dowd, and she's going to go.
Just for a moment, I understand that there may be an issue on the live feed on RCTV at the moment. It's still up and live on YouTube, and Phil Rushworth is working on it on RCTV right now. Excuse me for interrupting.
No problem. Thank you. I'm just going to give a very quick update, and I do apologize because I think Chief Burns is probably going to go into slightly more detail on some of it. But the schools have been working very closely with the command group as well as the Board of Health to make sure that we're following all of their guidelines and updates very closely. We have taken it, the notices that did come out, we actually did post all of the face covering notices, facial covering in all of our schools, mainly because we do still, with our lunch distribution and technology distribution, we do have people still entering the building. So we wanted to make sure that we're following all of the safety precautions. So we have posted all of that. We're also working very closely with them. As folks know, school ended rather abruptly on March 13, when we received the notice that got extended, then it got extended, then finally got extended through the end of the year. So unfortunately, with that, we did not have a chance to fully close out the way we normally would. So we are working closely with command and planning to make sure we have a process in place. We have to bring food services folks back in to properly close out the kitchens, to make sure everything is closed out correctly, food is disposed of properly to the extent it needs to be, as well as to make sure all of the equipment and the freezers and everything are properly shut down. We also are going to be working, which we'll be giving updates tomorrow. So it's a little bit precursor for school committee. We also were not able to properly have all of the teachers close out their rooms. As most of you know, there is a process where they need to come in, pack up. Teachers move classrooms year to year. We also, students were not able to completely close out lockers and their desks. So we're working very closely to come up with a plan to allow that to happen in the safest possible way. So we're working on drafts of that now that we'll be sharing with the command group and Board of Health to make sure everyone's in agreement. We're also similar to what the town is doing, coming up with plans to have staff come back into the buildings once the restrictions are lifted, so that we have a good process to allow that to happen in an organized manner. Our food distributions are continuing as we had anticipated. We have started to see increases in the number of families we are supporting. We continue to work very closely with Kevin Bo Miller and his team. They've been great to work with. Our Food Services Director, Danielle Collins, has been fantastic. She is in touch with the state on a daily basis, making sure we're able to get our commodity deliveries. We're also looking at what we need to do, knowing the school year's ending, to make sure that we have a plan in place between ourselves and the town to continue to support the families. And we're also looking into what potentially this looks like in the fall if schools do not open on time. So we're working very closely to make sure the families maintain support that we've been able to give them. And those are pretty much the most significant technology we're still distributing, but I think we've addressed the majority of that right now. It's really making sure the grab and go meals are continuing to happen. We did make sure the Food Services Group has all of the notifications that came out. They're also, as part of the meals that we're preparing, we did put the face covering notice in all the packages we distributed this week to make sure that the families were aware of all the precautions we were taking and that we were following the town guidelines as well.
Thanks, Gail. Two quick comments, if I could. One, RCTV is back. And second is, Emmy, there's a question directed to you. If I could read that one, please. This is from Krista Rubin on Fairchild Drive. "Thank you to each member of the Board of Health for all the phenomenal work you have undertaken to keep us all safe. Would you consider placing signage with pictures or pictographs at various locations showing the proper way to wear a mask, cover mouth and nose? I see many people wearing them incorrectly, compromising the protection." Thank you.
Oh, yeah, that's a fair point. I know that when the health agent has been going out, she's been directing the businesses to the proper use of the masks. I think our vice chair, Eleanor Shankoff, is working on some educational information. So this would be right in line with that. So yes, great suggestion.
Next on the list, I think, to Bob for town department updates?
Thank you, Mark. If you don't mind pulling up the two slides I showed you, I sent you rather earlier.
Yep, sorry. Give me one second.
I'll talk. I'll kill time. Much as the schools were planning for a safe reopening, as it were, it's now been extended by the governor to at least May 18. Until such time as when that executive order is lifted, we're following Board of Health guidance for social distancing. Employees are coming to work, but working at safe distances from each other. Different policies and procedures have changed. For instance, police now have a rotation of vehicles so that if anyone was to become sick, it's easy to trace back. DPW is one person per maximum in the vehicle. And our town departments last week sat down and spent a lot of time, again, doing a phased reopening. And here's some work that the Facilities Department has done at the town clerk's window. For instance, you can see a shield. It's got space at the bottom so that people can exchange documents back and forth. It's much like you've seen at many other businesses to protect both the customer and the employee from exchanging virus germs. So all of our customer service windows, this is one downstairs in DPW Engineering, the blue tape's not off yet. But a key feature is there's still an ability to share a plan or a large document by sliding underneath, so that the full service should still be in place, but this is just additional safety measures. And I have to give our Facilities Department a lot of credit. They went out and purchased some material, and they're doing all this work themselves at a time when other towns are just realizing they might have to think about it, and that prices are getting expensive. So we're prepared to have a reopening. We understand the idea of a phased reopening. It really depends on the state and what their timeframe is. We really don't know. We do know that on May 18, it will not be a full return to full opening for anyone. So we're expecting this to go on for some time. There are a few services that were discontinued or changed that are forecast to go back into place. The simplest example is the town clerk stopped taking marriage intentions until they're by appointment only, as opposed to just walking in and expressing by appointment only, as opposed to just walking in and expressing an interest. So again, the town departments, you know, will be ready to phase open as needed. It goes without saying, public safety is already working over 100%. They won't be phasing anything opening. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Next, I think Greg, update status of Redding facilities with high elderly population?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what we've been doing is two or three times a week, we've been going around and visiting the facilities with high elderly population for a couple of reasons. One, we want to see how they're doing. We want to see how their residents are doing, and we also want to see if they have enough protective equipment. Very early on, when this first broke in mid-March, there was a real scarcity of particularly masks, and some of our facilities didn't have enough masks. So we were able to, through MEMA, Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, get the masks and distributed them to them, also gowns and other protective, protective equipment. The elderly facilities are doing well. The staff is doing very well. We're pleased by how they're responding to it. Some of the facilities, you know, have their hands full managing it, but they're doing very well. So, you know, the, these facilities are at the highest risk. That's where most of the sickness is, and unfortunately, most of the deaths. So it's something that we're concerned about, and we're going to continue to follow until this is over.
Great. Thanks, Greg. The board members, if you have questions at any point, please go ahead. Karen, it looks like you have a question?
Oh.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I anticipate too early. Sorry about that.
Mark, one thing to add, of the, we've given out to these facilities over 700, over 700 pieces of protective equipment to the elderly facilities in town. In addition to the, that doesn't count what we've given to the police, DPW and other facilities.
Great. Thanks. Bob, before you and John talk a little bit about summer, do you want me to share the slide of goals and activities? Is now a good time for that?
Sure. Good, great idea.
Give me just one second to maneuver it onto the screen. So Greg, I want to let you talk about all the things that you have been engaged with in leading the community response here.
Well, first, that's not me. This is something that, that we've all been working on, every town department. School department has been instrumental with this. John, John Doherty-Galgoud, the police department, public services, the DPW, all the town departments have worked towards this. This is something I just kind of threw together this afternoon. You know, we've been right in the middle of this for several weeks right now, and because we're in the moment, we're trying to prepare for what we think is coming, but we're not sure. And as things change, I just want to take a minute and jot down the accomplishments that were accomplished together with all the departments working hand in hand. And I think I probably missed about 30, 40% of them. And I know if the schools added all of their stuff on this, this would keep going and going and going. But it gives you a little bit of insight to what we've been working on to make sure the residents are safe, the employees are safe, that businesses, once they're, we get approval from the governor's office and the Board of Public Health can open and open safely, and also so the residents can recover. So that's what this is all geared to. I don't know if you wanted me to read all of this. It's a lot, but there's been a tremendous amount accomplished in the last several weeks. And if you're not part of it, you may not know that these things were in place and happening.
But I think it's great. I think more important is to kind of see the size of this and the fact that, as you mentioned, that there may be another 30 or 40% that aren't even here. It's a list of accomplishments.
Oh, there definitely is things that are missing. Because after, after I sent it to the town manager, I thought of three or four other things to add to it. So, and it's, it's all about preparing the residents, making sure they're safe, making sure the employees are safe, and making sure that we're, we're ready to open up when that happens. Because we don't want in order to open and then to delay a business from opening because we can't, we can't get that inspection done.
Exactly. Great. John and Bob, school and summer recreation programs?
Sure, I'll start. I also just want to make a quick comment on Greg's list, that usually in emergency management, we have an incident of far less duration. So there's a time to reflect on the incident, usually within a few days after it ends. The governor put it well at a press conference today when someone asked him if he has any time to relax or wind down. He said absolutely not. This is a 24-hour job for the foreseeable future. And the same is true here, but it's really important that we reflect on things we've done, things we've done well, things that we could improve on, and not just hurdle head first into the future. So it's really helpful when Greg sits down and puts a list together. We talked about having a reopening plan, probably faster than others started to think about it. The planning component of this is really important, and we also need to learn kind of from what we're doing. The summer issue is something that I've asked our state delegation, who's done a great job on almost everything else, to try to get us some state guidance on the summer. I think it would be difficult for individual communities to take actions, although some are starting to. I learned two days ago that the state is unlikely, not impossible, but unlikely to say anything until that May 18th deadline on whether to hold summer programs or whether to cancel summer programs, or what circumstances they could be held under. There was a very large rec director, rec phone call today across the state. Everyone's wrestling with the same kind of issue, trying to imagine how to open and run safe programs. And quite honestly, from my perspective, I just don't see how it's possible for most programs. The advantage is you're outside. That's a tremendous advantage. Its advantage is it's a lot of people usually packed in and a lot of space. There's not a lot of summer activities that have six-foot distances between people. So Redding will remain as flexible as we can. We'll try to balance the need for residents to have a decision from us, but most importantly, it's the safety of, especially the kids that are forefront. And we'll see if we can wait till May 18 to make a decision. We'll do our best to do that. Hopefully the state, you know, can speed it up a little, or perhaps give us some guidance on what type of activities would be okay. But again, I have to say, from my perspective, if I had to decide today, I would, I would say we're closed for the summer. And then perhaps some activities could be opened if they could be done safely. I know John and I have spent some time talking about this and talking about the fall semester for schools. Our facilities department has set up mock classrooms with social distancing, and it's not a pretty sight. I don't know, you get maybe six or eight kids in a classroom. And I know there's been discussion about, you know, going to staggered shifts for students and for teachers and for classes. So, you know, we want to over-prepare and over-plan for this, I guess, because we just don't know what future directions are. And certainly the town and the schools would like to make the same decision in terms of summer activities. So at this point, John, if you want to jump in?
Sure. I, a lot what Bob said, I echo. Obviously, in the decisions that we're making this summer, it's really going to be based on student and staff safety. What is the, an increasing challenge for us, though, is that we will have to provide some sort of programming for our students with disabilities. So we're currently planning right now two different paths. One path is if we are going to have extended-year programming for students with disabilities onsite in a, at a school. The other option is to provide a remote learning environment, which is obviously a lot more challenging for, for students with disabilities. So those, those are the two avenues that we're looking at right now. In addition to that, obviously, there's, the schools, there's always a lot going on in the schools, but, you know, our extended-year program, I mean, I'm sorry, our, yeah, extended year program with, after-school program with students that we have during the summer, and our summer school program is also something that we need to look at, but, you know, we're going to also work very closely with the town and make similar decisions that would be made with recreation. But the, the big one right now is how do we, how do we deliver the services in our extended years, services for those students with disabilities?
Yes, John. Karen, you have a question?
I, my heart goes out to all the families and children affected by this, and I understand the complexities affecting their families. Just to, before we get off this topic, I just wanted to follow up, as this is an ongoing situation. Are we getting the masks in that we ordered? And probably this is for Greg.
If you hang on about 30 seconds, Karen, that's the next item literally on the agenda.
Okay.
Any other questions so far? Keep rolling. Okay, Greg, please, could you address that question?
Sure. So we have gotten part of the shipments that have been ordered. We're still waiting. And up until just a couple of days ago, we weren't sure, we were waiting for some larger shipment, and we weren't quite sure if we were going to get them or not. But we did. And so what, what we've, what we've been doing today is putting a plan in place to distribute masks to residents. We couldn't do it last week because we didn't have them and didn't know when they were going to come in. And we have to make sure that we were protecting our employees, because we have people that are responding to calls where people are affected. So we have to make sure that we have enough for, for all our people that have to work out in the street. So we did develop a plan with the assistance of the, of the police department and the school department and public services and library staff. We have a plan to distribute masks to the residents, and tentatively, it's for Wednesday, May 6th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. So we've carved out several thousand masks to, to give away to the residents. And we, because there is such short supply, we want to make sure that they go to the residents of the most vulnerable. So we're looking at distributing them to residents who are 60 and older, and for those who may have medical issues. So that's, that's our, that's our target. We, we're going to have about 8,000 masks to distribute. We'll, we'll save us supply for our elderly facilities in the, in the community, and we'll distribute those ourselves to them for those people that can't get out. The, the process will be, they'll drive into the field house and remain in their cars, and we'll distribute that, those masks to them. So it's, we're, we're pretty far along on it, and, you know, I'm confident that the event will be successful. We're also incorporating volunteers. We've had a lot of people that volunteered to assist us in responding to the COVID-19 crisis, so we're going to use some volunteers in this effort as well.
Can I just jump in? Can I just jump in real quick?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to jump in real quick and just say a shout out to our health agent, Laura Vlasic, because it's hard to get masks, and, and she had a contact who did end up coming through. So, so shout out to her. Thank you.
That's right. Yes. And that was instrumental, because that was a, that was a big shipment for us, you know, several thousand. And without that, this just wouldn't have happened. So thank you, Emmy. Yes.
Fabulous. Next, this is discussion of community events. Greg, do you want to update that one as well, please?
I thought Bob was going to update it. Bob has better information on Memorial Day observances and Friends and Family Day?
All right, I can do that. Also, on the mask distribution, there will be a code red announcement going out either Thursday or Friday, and then another one on Monday as a reminder. There will also be plenty of literature available to publicize the event, and there will be some sort of a leaflet or flyer handed out to people as they, as they arrive, just again, pointing at resources and other things that they may want to know. And just to emphasize Greg's point, this is meant to be a directed effort at the most needy people in town, demographically neediest. Our volunteers have created a lot of homegrown, home-knitted masks that have met the demand. Every single person that has asked the town for a mask as of this morning has one or has had the need met. But this effort will go well above and beyond the people that have asked. We know there's people that aren't asking us. But it's important that only people that really need these masks show up, because we just don't want to run out. We don't know when we can have a second event, because the supply chain is so erratic right now. In terms of community events, the Friends and Family Day in June is officially canceled. Memorial Day services will not take place in cemeteries. There's still a plan ongoing to have a very, very small gathering, and by that I mean maybe four or five of us out in the common, or perhaps right in front of Town Hall, and to have an honor of the day, an honor of the veterans in that way. It's a very different year this year. Our Veterans Agent, Kevin Bowmiller, is certainly something near and dear to his hearts, and as he said to you last week, the veterans will not be forgotten. It will be different this year. We, this is an issue, again, we really haven't had any advice from the state, other than, you know, by extending to May 18th, the date of, you know, it's likely to still be a 10-person or less gathering. So gathering in cemeteries is really just out of the question at this point. I've been in touch with two folks related to the Fall Street Fair. No decision has been made on that yet. That's an early September event. My guess is they will have to decide in the next 30 or 45 days, because as many of you know, there's a lot of advanced planning there. I have no real sense of where that will go. And those are the three big sort of community events on the horizon. If any of you can think of other gatherings that would be large, you know, please let us know, and we'll, we'll work on those. Graduation clearly would be one, and John is working on that.
Thanks. Quick comment for Greg and for Emmy. The point that was made earlier by Krista Rubin about literature and how to properly wear and use a mask, might it be possible to distribute that with the masks?
Yes, we're working on that now. So mask care is, is part of it, you know, when it needs to be thrown out, things like that. And I hope to include the other aspect in wearing it properly as well. So we're in the process of including that.
Great. Thank you. Next on the list is financial health. Bob and John, have you listed here?
You saw from our legislators that that's what, that's the issue they spent the most time on. It's not something we've talked about a lot in Redding, but it's certainly something that we've worked a lot in. May 12th, there will be a Finance Committee meeting to discuss altering the FY21 budget. John and Gail and I, as well as Sharon and Andre at Town Hall, have looked at revenues, looked at expenses. It's really too soon to publicly say much, but I will say the magnitude of the cut is not nearly what you've seen in other cities or other states. Prop 2.5 giveth and taketh away. Prop 2.5 never let us spend much money. So now, having a 2%, you know, guaranteed stream of income, albeit perhaps cash flow uncertainty, is a tremendous benefit for towns in Massachusetts. We will not be looking at 15% reductions of our revenues like the state is looking at, because so much of our revenues in Redding are property taxes. Again, people may pay slowly, and will have to accommodate for the cash flow, but budget cuts will not be as severe as you'll read in the papers from others, other states and other cities and towns across the country, frankly, because they've had 7% and 10% increases annually for many years, and we never did that. So the... So the good news is the cuts will be relatively low. The bad news is that this will, in aggregate, undo a big percent of what the override was. Not to say we're gonna cut all those services by any means. I think the biggest challenge for John and I, as was referenced, I think, by Representative Jones, is for how long? What does this look like? It's, it's a relatively straightforward exercise to cut a budget for next year. What about the year after? What about the year after that? What are the assumptions? What is state aid gonna look like in years two and three? Those are very hard questions right now. If we knew for sure what the next three to five years had in store, I think John and I would have a much clearer picture about what we should do. But since we don't, or at least I'll speak for myself, I don't want to disassemble the organization and then find out in a year or two, gee, things got better pretty fast. We didn't really have to do that. Reading, again, is an extremely fortunate position in having a very large balance of reserves. We could have Town Meeting pass the exact same budget that's in front of it and have no worries at all from a financial standpoint. It just seems very imprudent to do that and very honestly, very disrespectful. So we will be making cuts. You know, there'll be both the school and the town. We'll be asking FinCom to use a little bit more reserves. We'll try to do some things, which is a little harder for John, that can be restored during the year if things get better. So capital comes right to mind. If all of a sudden in the next October, November, our picture is better, it's easy to spend capital at a November Town Meeting or even an April Town Meeting. For the schools especially, it's impossible to hire teachers in the middle of a year. You just don't do that. So I think we're, we've given it a lot of thought. I think we, much, much as the representatives and senators said, we're being extremely conservative and probably assuming hopefully worse than what happens. When they asked me what, you know, what they should bring into their discussions, I said the same thing to them, which is don't assume anything that's positive. Assume the worst. Assume about as bad as you can imagine because what would not help the schools and the town especially is mid-year cuts when they, when they don't guess right next year and they don't have a rainy day fund that's big enough. We have seen that twice in my tenure where there's been mid-year nine C cuts. And if it happens halfway through the year, you have to cut twice as much halfway through the year to to take, you know, take care of that revenue shortfall. So I've also urged them, you know, please give it to a straight. Don't sugarcoat it. So again, we are expecting a large decrease in local revenues, but not nearly on the order of what the state, you know, will see as a percent. And again, we do have a good rainy day fund ourself. You know, the careful budgeting and careful spending we've all done for the last few years, notwithstanding an override, has really now have put us in a better position than many. John?
The, the only other piece I want to add is I think this is where the open communication that we have between town and schools is even more important. We've already had, Bob and I and Gail have been talking about this probably for two to three weeks now, what this would, you know, what could this look like? So we, you know, we've been planning this. We have a few additional challenges outside of the the revenue piece. Obviously, there's going to be some costs associated with the remote learning moving forward if that continues. There may be some additional special education costs. So those are the types of things that we have to take a look at now. It's almost like there are certain aspects of our budget that we need to rethink along with the the revenue piece that Bob mentioned.
Yesterday, I circulated Town Budget draft cuts to Department Heads. And and they're not all cuts. Some are additions, some are changes. We clearly have some COVID nineteen related expenses that we know are there, and it would be dishonest or disingenuous to ignore them. But order of magnitude, we have already spent or committed about two hundred thousand dollars just for COVID on the town side. And I know the schools have a figure, and that's expenses. That's not wages. I'm sure we will not fully budget the costs of COVID nineteen, no matter what we do, because we just can't know. So again, our cash reserves will come in quite handy next year if if we have, you know, any large number. I know the schools, depending on what course of action they take for the next year, as John mentioned, there's gonna be some, some new and possibly very large costs related to COVID nineteen that we just can't know today and may not know until August. So it will be a different budget. We're hoping very much that it can be presented succinctly to FinCom on May twelfth, and hopefully they'll agree with the approach. And then, you know, hopefully, again, on June fifteenth, we can just dispense of the budget and a couple of other small housekeeping issues related to that with a one-day Town Meeting. I've been in touch with other area managers and and our delegation, and a one-twelfth budget in July is absolutely a last resort. It is not something that anyone wants to do. It's something that has to be a real emergency that you just couldn't have foreseen. And right now, we have a lot of advanced time to plan. So I'm very optimistic that we'll be able to meet in some fashion remotely or otherwise in June, have a Town Meeting and have a budget passed. And it's, you know, we're, we're doing it at a time. All, all levels of government are serving the constituents and suffering losses. It's not quite the same as many businesses that are suffering significant losses, but they're, they're home not doing much. They don't have a business to run. You know, the travel business doesn't exist. Very difficult if you work in that field, but at least you're not also being asked to be at work and provide one hundred and ten percent of a service that you were previously doing. So that's the fine line that John and I want to walk, is the service that we're providing is going to be assumed and needed. And again, we don't want to disassemble the organizations that provide that service.
Thanks, Bob. On that point, May twelfth FinCom meeting, I'm wondering how many Select Board members might want to participate in that meeting. I, for one, do. If three of us or three or more of us are interested, let's post. I see enough heads nodding. Let's post, please, for the Select Board for the May twelfth FinCom meeting. Thank you, folks. I'm sorry, did I interrupt?
No, all set. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so next on the agenda, I think we will put in some public, public comment. What I wanted to do.
Mark, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ann.
We'll move on. I appreciate what Dr. Doherty mentioned about the town and schools working collaboratively. And to that end, I would encourage, you know, both Bob and John to, to approach this looking at, at the needs that exist and, and have those drive budgeting decisions versus what the traditional split has been. I know that when the override was set years, a few years back, you know, there was adherence to the traditional split. And I, and I don't know where exactly the needs will derive from, but I would, I would encourage us to, to move forward in a way that we're addressing the needs that arise versus trying to, you know, to hold the, the split that's always roughly been in place.
Excellent point, yeah.
And I had, I don't know where this would be appropriate, if now is the time to, to address a question that we did discuss somewhat last week with respect to food security. And Kevin Bowmiller spoke about the work that Human and Elder Services was doing with respect to helping residents apply for SNAP benefits and the like. And I didn't know if there was any new information from Human and Elder Services on the food security side of things. I did receive from Reverend Jamie Michaels of Old South United Methodist Church some information and update from the food pantry, if you'd like me to share that at any particular time.
Please, I think timing is, is good. Shall we first kind of address your question? I don't know who the right person is or if we have the answer tonight, if we should come back. I'm, I'm kind of looking at Jean, but you can't tell because I'm looking at everybody.
I can speak to that a little bit. I did speak with Kevin Bowmiller today to get an update on where we were at with the food that's been collected at the Pleasant Street Center. And I know he spoke about that last week. It really was a, a really dramatic statement from the volunteer community, and we're very appreciative of the Young Women's League and the Reading Lions for gathering all that food for us. We have compiled food bags and distributed a portion of that food, but there still is food at the center and bags that can be very easily sent out. Our van driver is there every day, Monday through Friday. And as needs arrive, as needs arise, the van driver is very happy to go out and deliver the food. So that was something that Command early on identified as being a concern and a concern that we took very seriously so that we were being responsive to that pocket of need in the community. And I think we've done that. In, in addition, the donations and the gift cards, we have a systematic way of processing and tracking those. Some go directly to the food pantry, some, we have a system for allocating them. And so I think the biggest thing in my mind that we're doing that I think is touching the community and the community of need is the daily phone calls that go out to our most fragile population, our most vulnerable, and those are continuing. Likewise, although it's not Elder Human Services, we're daily contacting the business community. As much as we're concerned about the vulnerable population of need, we're also so concerned about the business community. And Erin Schaefer, our Economic Development Director, and myself and so many others are really boots on the ground, reaching into that business community. We're working very collaboratively with, with the Chamber and other community partners. We're on calls every day with statewide groups so that we can be really plugged in. And if you haven't had a chance to go to the website and see the letter that gets updated routinely on that economic development, I'd encourage you to do that. There's a lot of resources. Just click here. I think we've talked about it a little bit in the Select Board meeting, so I know it's a little more than what you asked for, but I think, I think we're on it.
Ann, you're, you're.
You did. I just realized. I said that was great. Thank you, Jean. And I know Gail spoke to this to a certain extent, and I've spoken offline with, with Bob about this a little bit about being able to sustain the provision of meals to students throughout the summer. And is that something from either the town or school side we'd be looking at in terms of amending budgets for, for FY twenty-one?
So Bob, if you want, I can jump in, or Mark, sorry. Went to the wrong person. So, sorry, Mark. I looked at Bob because actually Bob and I have had numerous discussions about this because we do want to make sure from the school side, it is trying to be a rule follower. It is very heavily regulated. We are very fortunate that the Food Services Director that we hired, she started in the fall, actually has gone through all the certification programs necessary to run a summer program, which is the first hurdle to overcome. So if there was the need to do that, we are certified to do that. She's the only person on our staff right now that is so, but it's great because she runs the program for us as well as Wakefield. We also, which has not come out yet, there is, she's been on the phone every day with Desi, with the state because there are specific waivers that you need to have in order to run what they call a seamless summer program. And what that does is it allows you to not only run the program, which you have to have the waiver for a school to run the program. And the reason is because students are actually not consuming the meals on site. We're actually giving them food to take off-premise. So there is guidance that's coming out that we believe will allow us to use our commodity, which is great because it gives us the pricing that has been determined through Desi and DoD for that. It would also allow us to obtain reinforcements, which is the key part to make it a sustainable program. So we believe those waivers are forthcoming. So we have been having discussions with Command and the town to look at ways to do it. And I, I have to thank Bob because the first thing he said to me is we need to do what's right. Don't, that, we have to know what it's going to cost, but don't let that drive the decision. We have to make sure we're doing what's right for the population. But we have received good news that we don't think it would be cost prohibitive to do it. We're also working through the mechanics because one thing that they've said is that this would allow you to continue to run this type of program through the end of September, which we think is tied more to a federal deadline than a state deadline. So we're in the process of looking at what the needs might be, but it, it's been a very collaborative process, and I do thank Bob and the rest of the Command structure to let us look at what it would take and not let only the cost be the driver of it.
Thank you, Gail.
Any other comments from the board? Any comments from Command that we haven't covered?
Mark, would you like me to relay what I learned relative to the food pantry?
Yes, please.
I heard from Reverend Michaels that they have seen an increase in new clients, both folks they had not seen before and people who are coming back after an absence. But numbers physically at the pantry haven't been abnormally high. And they think that might be because a fair number of people are effectively sheltering in place and aren't going out either to the food pantry pantry nor the grocery store. And so they're trying to organize a donation program for them. There was another group of individuals, of clients who had heard that they had closed for two weeks but hadn't heard that they had reopened. But the food pantry is, in fact, reopened. And their understanding is that the greatest need right now is among families. Kids are home, they're eating more, and it's, families are struggling, a lot of families are struggling to meet that demand. They said that they're, you know, very grateful. There have been lots of financial donations to the pantry. So some, it's, the, the greater struggle sometimes is food availability because stores can be sold out. But they're doing the best they can. They're very grateful to, for the support of the community. And that, that is the update from the food pantry.
Other comments or questions? Great. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Allison.
Hi, give me a moment to unmute. So my questions are more for Bob, but they may be more appropriate for the upcoming FinCom meeting. So I was curious about the anticipated lost revenue. Bob, I know you already touched on that. It's, it's a little soon to tell. But in particular, as it relates to the mail tax, assuming that that's going to be impacted. I'm curious how assessed values are going to be impacted, especially commercial properties. And we obviously heard from our state delegation on state funds. We also talked a couple of weeks ago now about anticipated water and sewer capital projects that are on the horizon and that those may get delayed. So an update on that would also be helpful. So not seeking any answers now, but just things that are, I think, important to raise as we move forward. Thank you.
I can answer some of those now. For the meals tax, our prior assumption had been over four hundred thousand. That's about cut in half for next year. That's assuming some kind of a soft staggered opening this summer and not, certainly not a return to full speed ahead until some part of the year. In terms of property valuations, again, the beauty of Prop two and a half, if you will, is that it's a levy on the tax base as a whole. The shift between commercial and residential may happen if commercial values go down, but it doesn't technically affect the income that the town receives, if you will, if, if people pay on time. So the, the property valuation will have no input in, in impacts. So the property valuation will have no impact, sorry, on total revenue. Perhaps timing of revenue, again, if people pay slowly. And there will be some delays in capital projects, especially in water and sewer. As I mentioned to you a couple of weeks ago, it was not palatable to have an increase in water and sewer or have the smallest one possible. But one of the challenges in water and sewer, because it's so much smaller than the general fund, is something that the Senator mentioned earlier. You have to assume that less people are going to pay on time. Taxes, that's not a big impact. In water or sewer, it could be. We assume right now 4% of the people will pay slowly. If we just increase that to 6%, it drives up rates more than you're going to want to increase them. So we're trying to walk a fine line here of being very sensitive to the rate payer, but being very realistic as well. So hopefully that answers many of your questions.
And I think, Bob, later in May, we're scheduled to take a look at water and sewer rates. Is that right?
Yeah, I wanted to talk to you about that. Normally, or at least in the last several years, town meeting has appreciated it if the board votes rates before town meeting. So before June 15th is probably the best arrangement. So yeah, after the FinCom meets certainly, and before town meeting meets is ideal.
Great, thanks. Any other quick comments? Okay, let me suggest this. Why don't we take a five-minute break? Why don't we, oh, it's 8:47, of course. How about we come back at 8:55? Five minutes to nine, we'll come back. So we'll go to recess till 8:55. I can thump for a second here. So I'd like to do two things. One is I'd like to do, make a comment about public comment, accept public comment. And then if the board is okay with it, let's change the order slightly. John Stempak has been waiting very, very patiently. Let's move to the RMLD topics. And then we'll come back to the liaison topics and then finish the agenda. Is that, is that okay with everybody? Great. Okay. All right, so let's do this. I created a slide, let me just see if I'm able to share it. Okay, so I wanted to clarify a little bit further how we administer our public comment policy as we work with emails coming to the board. The board received some comments about how we're doing this over the last few weeks. We discussed our policies at the last meeting. And I've also consulted with town council to better understand how I believe we should handle public comments. So our Select Board written policy allows for public comment when people are recognized by the chair. They may then speak for the prescribed period of time. And they should avoid making disparaging comments about individuals. This is the actual policy that's in our Select Board policy handbook. So to best administer this through email participation, I'd like to set the following guidelines. And this is really a clarification, I think, more than anything else. We will accept public comment via email or letter where residents state their name and address. Comments will be published in our meeting packets based on when they are received. If received before the next meeting is posted, it will be included in that week's packet. If it's received after the posting but before the following meeting is posted, it will be included in the second packet. We will establish a period of public comment toward the beginning of each meeting at the chair's discretion. Residents are invited to send in their comments, and they should correspond to a speaking time of up to two minutes and avoid making disparaging comments about individuals. We will read the comments in their entirety unless the comment or some portion of the comment violates the policy or applicable law. In addition, the chair may, in his or her discretion, allow for public comment during the meeting as we address items on the agenda subject to the guidelines above. Comment is welcome on all matters of concern to citizens. If the matter is in the Select Board's purview, we may review it for action. If the matter is not in the Board's purview, we may refer to staff or other boards and committees as appropriate. Few other clarifying comments. Comments that are posted with the agenda can be addressed by the Select Board at that meeting if the requirements of the open meeting law are otherwise satisfied. Other comments may not be addressed by the board. Comments received during the meeting about agenda items can be addressed by board members at the meeting. Comments that are not about agenda items cannot be addressed because they're not part of the agenda. If we receive a large number of comments from people on any one issue, making it infeasible to read each comment without undue repetition, delay, or disruption to the meeting, we may consider summarizing the comments on an issue rather than reading each one and tally the number of people voicing a particular comment. So I worked on understanding kind of where we are and getting a good understanding from town council. And I'm hoping that this clarifies things. And where it doesn't, I would ask that people share their comments and opinions toward that end so that we can improve it. I do have one comment that came in earlier this evening. I'd like to read that one now, if that's all right. Sorry, I'm just changing my screens here for a moment. So this is from W. Bruce Cooper, 20 Covey Hill Road, Reading. The subject is suggestions for public comments during Zoom meetings. Public comment policies for virtual meetings. Virtual meeting policies for public comments should be published on the town website. For virtual meetings, policies should be stated at the start of the meeting. Email and phone mail comments should be permissible if in compliance with policies. A summary of a comment is not acceptable. Email comments should be displayed on screen and, in quotes, voiced during the meeting. Phone mail comments should be played. Emails should be read by the town manager or by designated staff. If reading of emails by the town manager or designated staff is not acceptable to the board, then, quote, "text-to-voice" software should be used to, quote, "voice" the email comments. For phone mail comments, quote, "voice-to-text" software should be used to later publish with the emails in the board packet. Clear instructions should be stated on how to access public comments in the board packets. I was going to say, why don't we pause for a moment, see if there are any other? I have not seen any other public comments so far this evening. Has anybody else seen anything? Okay, why don't we, all right, let me just shift gears here slightly. Let's go on to the RMLD discussions.
Mark, my impression was we would be discussing public comment, how other communities handle it, and suggestions for future meetings at our next meeting.
Yeah, thanks. I think that's a good idea. So my hope in making that statement was more to clarify, I guess, existing policy and structure. I think that what we really want to do, and we talked about it at our last meeting, was to learn more about how it's being done effectively in other places. And if we can make improvements to the system that we're using. So I would agree with you. I think we should put that on to our agenda for our next meeting as an item to discuss and get some feedback. I know, and you've gotten some feedback. I perceived a little bit of feedback. Other members may be getting some feedback as well.
And if the next, that next packet could include these public comment guidelines, I haven't myself really fully digested them. I think that would be helpful.
Yes, absolutely. So I think what we can do, yeah, is publish them into the next packet. And it probably will make sense to publish more formally, either as they are or as we adopt going forward. Most of these were taken from kind of our existing policy and how it has been done. There were some clarifications that were made. And I know in last week's public comment, there were some questions specific to that. And that's what I tried to address with Ray, is to make sure that we understood what's required, how it should be done. Carl.
Mark, is the, thank you for putting this together. Is the bottom section a work in progress, I guess, for the board to talk about in the future?
I think it definitely can be. The points one and two in terms of the posting is how it's handled, is how we've handled it, I guess, as a board, and I believe how it's supposed to be. The third item in terms of large numbers is something that we did talk about last week and we certainly can talk about going forward. The question that came up was how to handle a lot of comment without being disruptive to the meeting. The point of public comment is to allow people to be able to have their say as part of the meeting. And so the question that I raised was how can one handle lots and lots and lots of comments? And this was the feedback.
Can I say one, I know we talked about this last week, as Anne said. But I want to bring something to the board's attention that Bob may or may not mention before tonight's end, is I spoke with a colleague in Wakefield, who's the chair, Ed Dombrowski. And they are doing a little summit next week with all the neighboring towns. I don't feel aware of this, Mark, yet, but it's next Tuesday night.
Yep, 7:00 PM. In fact, I was going to put that on our agenda. Initially, it was going to be a closed group, and then they decided to make it a broader group. And what I wanted to offer to the board is the opportunity for any and all to participate. We just need to know if we'll have quorum, and if so, then essentially to post.
Okay, yeah, I was under the impression when I spoke to Ed today that he was going to ask the town manager and a few of the board members, but obviously if all the board members wanted to attend. I don't see any problem with that, but it's gonna be informative, best practices, and how to handle public comment, and a number of other topics. So I think that'd be very useful to see what other towns are doing as instructed by you last week or that we all discussed, and to, you know, see some of the faces that are doing, going through the same thing.
Well, I thought it was about, more about the sort of reopen plans for reopening. I didn't realize it was broader than that.
Yeah, that was my understanding also. It was about kind of restart. And Bob, you may have the best insight here.
No, I have the same insight you and Ann do. That's Carlos, that's all news to me if that's going to happen. I do expect to get an agenda sometime tomorrow from Wakefield. They know that we have to post you tomorrow if there's gonna be a quorum, and I'm gonna assume there will be. So as soon as I have an agenda, I'll certainly forward it to the board. But I was also under the impression it was really just to have a coordinated discussion about a reopening, if you will.
Okay, I heard differently, but whatever's gonna be discussed, will be discussed.
When you were talking to town council, I did go out and take a look at Winchester and Lynnfield. And although in the case of Lynnfield, I am seeing public comment posted on their agenda. In sitting through their audio-only meeting, there was no public comment. And there was no public comment in a Lynnfield meeting. Did you have any discussions with town council as to, how bad is that? Are they, I'm like, are they just doing it because it's a pandemic? This is, it was eye-opening to me that there, those two towns specifically, were so different than what we've been doing.
You can answer the Lynnfield part. Lynnfield has not had public comment in over 20 years, and there's only one resident that has complained.
Very different town.
Right.
I suggest that, I think this is worthy of more discussion, and we should put it onto our agenda for the next meeting to kind of continue our discussions of how do we improve it? How do we, how do we make it as useful to the citizens as possible, and also allowing us to conduct our business?
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, let's shift over to two topics related to the Reading Municipal Light Department. The first one relating to the payment to the town discussions that have been taking place. The second one related to the 20-year agreement. Vanessa or Karen, do you want to introduce it, or just wanna have, Johnny, you, would you like to make a statement? Or how would you like to proceed?
Sure, I'd be happy to unless Vanessa or Karen, who've been attending our meetings religiously, and we thank you very much for that. But yes, I could, I'd certainly be, I'd like to be able to talk to it if I could, and then take any comments off of that. First, I'd just like to say thank you for inviting us to the meeting, and it's been very enlightening, and we will definitely start doing this more often. I think it really enhances the communication between us and between the town, and between our, quite frankly, the four towns that we serve as well. And as you know, the RMLD is doing what they do best, which is making sure that you get the power that you need and keeping the power on during this coronavirus. And our general manager, amongst other things, has created multiple teams so that one team is isolated from another in case there are issues that come up. And there's many other things that she has done, and I think has been very much in front of the entire virus. The only good news, if there is any that comes out of this, is that the RMLD still has about, has rates that are approximately one-half of national grid or effort source. So for those individuals who are losing or have lost their jobs, makes it much easier, at least to face that, as opposed to getting double that, you know, at some point in the future. So let me spend just a little bit of time talking about why we're wrestling with this, because I think it's very important. I don't know how many of you know the background. Obviously Karen does, and Vanessa does, and Mark, certainly you, having been to our meetings as well. We have two payments basically that we make to the town. One is what's called above-the-line payment, which is, it's formularic. It's 2% of the net plan of the RMLD times a percentage of usage across our four-town system. And that's cut and dried. We know those numbers. They're in the packet. It has sort of been sent out and or posted, and it has been very straightforward. The other payment to the town is what's called below-the-line. And this is terminology certainly I didn't invent. It's been around for a long time. But the below-the-line payment is, first and foremost, it's a voluntary payment. But, you know, we've been doing it for decades. We know the town depends on it. It's something that can't go away. And it's basically, if you want to think about it, it's a, it's a payment for the fact that the town put the initial assets of the RMLD into this pot that serves four towns, which then became state law mandated essentially. And so at that point in time, there was a difference between the RMLD being tied at the hip to the town of Reading and now serving four towns. And so we had to find some way of compensating Reading for doing that. So you might think of it as an annuity. So the assets were put into a place, and you get a certain percentage back every year from those assets. And that's what basically has been going on for many decades now, and it's worked out very well, I think. I think it's been part of the whole reason, part of the reason anyway, that the town of Reading has done an excellent job in being physically conservative and is ready for this as much as they can be, as any town can be for what's just happened. And the RMLD is the same way. I mean, we've got a number of sort of pots of money, funds, et cetera, which were used for things through the oil crisis and other areas that really needed to have investment. And that's why we maintain them. So the prior methodology we had used was basically a CPU-type of thing, Consumer Price Index, CPI, that worked for a number of years. But what we found in the last couple of years when we did this study back in 2018 is that our usage in terms of kilowatt-hours was actually declining. And yet our costs were increasing, and we had a huge amount of maintenance we still had to put into the system because it just didn't happen in previous years. So it was almost a perfect storm for us, and we call it a convergence because our revenues are slightly going down, our costs are going up, and we can't afford to keep making the payment to the town the way we made it in the past. So very difficult situation for all of us to be in, right? Because all of us on the board of commissioners are residents of the town of Reading. We want to make sure that that's being done correctly. By the same token, we serve four towns, and we're not the largest supplier of electricity to the system. So in light of that, we've been struggling with this since the end of 2018, trying to find a methodology that would be appropriate, that would satisfy everyone's needs. So, and everyone's needs, by the way, are all those customers in these four towns. It's the Citizens Advisory Board, which represents the four towns. It's the staff at RMLD, and it's certainly the town of Reading. I mean, this is just top of our list in terms of making sure that we do the right thing. So we've examined and have presented many approaches to how we might solve this. Mark Doxter knows extremely well because he provided half of them, staying up, I don't know how many hours you spent on yours, Mark, but we've all sort of been there, quite a few, and we very much appreciate the input. But none of them quite met the needs of what I've just described. And the feedback we've gotten from the Citizens Advisory Board and from also what we're trying to do for the town, et cetera, just didn't seem to make it right. So we've pulled together what we think is a methodology. It's not, hasn't been accepted yet. As a matter of fact, I've called a special meeting for tomorrow night of the RMLD board to go in detail into what is being proposed. I'm gonna share that with you here very quickly. But basically, it's to try to get to closure on this, and so we all kind of know what is in place and to try to push it through perhaps by our May board meeting. So what are we doing? What are we proposing? The first thing is we're proposing that instead of making our last payment under the present situation where we froze the payment for two years, on July 1st, 2021, we're going to extend that payment to the end of the year. That's what one of the proposals is.
John, I apologize for interrupting. The information John is about to present is available on the rmld.com website. And you can view it here as well. There's actually another presentation, Mark, I think you're sharing this. It's in the supplemental packet for tomorrow's, for their meeting tomorrow, if everyone wants to open that up. Thanks, John.
That's great. Thank you very much, Vanessa. That's great. So we start by using something called the kilowatt-hour consumption because there's, it's the purest form of measurement. It's not revenue. It's not any of the other things that can, are downstream. It's really what we're in business to do. We take the, and it's measured exactly. So we know our total kilowatt-hour consumption, and we're suggesting that what we do is we take a three-year weighted average. So that's a historical weighted average of the kilowatt-hour consumption, and then multiply this by a variable called mils per kilowatt-hour. And the reason we multiply it by that is because there are industry benchmarks that talk to what all of the other municipals in Massachusetts and across the country use as a measure of providing revenue sources to their towns. And it typically, at max, goes into about three mils or so, maybe just a little bit over. What we're proposing is using 3.875 mils per kilowatt-hour, which is substantially above the benchmark, as a mechanism for basically putting in place a calculation for this formula. And the reason we're doing this, or suggesting this, is we're not doing it yet. We haven't gotten approval. There's no motion to approve this yet. Is to have a very simple formula that's easily tracked, and we can see what's happening with very, very simple calculations. So the three-year average of the kilowatt-hours is a huge aid in helping to roll out any major change in consumption that might have with coronavirus, with weather conditions, and by the way, mild weather, such as we've had in the recent winter, so far are far outweighing, you know, any other variable in the system. There are multiple variables that we, it's very, very difficult to kind of peel them apart and understand which one does what to whom. And the other one is like, energy consumption's been going down because of LEDs. Use a tenth the amount of power, right? And we're all having in our homes and businesses. And as a matter of fact, the RMLD puts programs in place to help both commercial, industrial customers everywhere in our four-town area to put in the most energy-efficient things that they could. Sort of counterintuitive, right, to in terms of running a business. Why are you helping people consume less power? But that's the way, that's what our charter is, is to help the communities that we're in and maintain very, very low rates. So all those three or four different things have, well, may have an impact in terms of what the total is. But the one thing we can measure, on a historical basis anyway, at the end of every year, is how many kilowatt-hours are out there, and then we can kind of decide what to do with it. The good thing about this, as I mentioned, is that if there is an impact, if there's a drop of, you know, 5% or 8% in terms of the COVID, and by the way, we haven't seen that happen yet. If there is a drop in our kilowatt-hour consumption, this three-year rolling average smoothes that out. So there's not a huge impact to the town in terms of the payment that we would suggest. As a matter of fact, it also helps the town if we can get our economic development program together to actually increase the electrical usage, because the same thing happens in reverse. The number paid to the town goes up, and it's just a very impressive sort of way of thinking about not letting something impact you immediately where you have to do something very dire to confront it. Now, we've got certain, the programs that are in the capital program, which are above the line. A few of those might get deferred, but for the most part, we're replacing this. Yes, thank you very much, Mark, for showing that. We have to do this maintenance. We can't have the transformers blowing up. They're 15 to 20 years old. They're end-of-life. We've got to maintain them. We've got a $6 to $8 million program to put in a substation, which should have been put in a year and a half, two years ago, to service our biggest customer over in Wilmington. We can't, we can't survive without doing that. And so those are things that are moving forward immediately. We've got the funds to do it, and our general manager, Colleen O'Brien, is moving forward on those. So tomorrow, Carlos' RMLD meeting will be addressing this, and we're going to be doing live, you know, question and answer, which is the second part of the second chart that's being put up. Just to say that, what if we increase the RMLD usage by 1%? What if we have a COVID impact of one year for 2020? And then the next year, it's back to business as usual. So we've got a spreadsheet. We've got all the numbers in it. We can easily put in plus one, minus one. It ripples through. It shows you what the results are. And just doing a quick calculation, if we were to hold steady, hold steady in terms of kilowatt-hour usage over the next five years, the additional payment to the town would be on the order of $300,000 as cumulative. So we're trying not to impact what we've got for you today. We're trying to make it feasible to get more money, if at all possible, tied to the economic development of the town. And if there is a hiccup, this long-lasting hiccup, we're doing our best to mitigate it in any way we possibly can. So that's kind of where we're headed. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Board members have questions, comments?
Hi, Mark. I'll weigh in. So to provide a little background for those watching at home, this has been an ongoing conversation between the select board and the RMLD commissioners. It has been discussed in front of town meeting as well. If, Mark, if you don't mind putting on the screen the other PDF attachment, that might be more helpful.
Tell me which one it is. I just looked on the site. I didn't see it. Is it in the packet, not in the?
It's a separate post. It should be on the, actually, some of the, I'm totally sure it's on the RMLD website.
It is on the RMLD website. Mark, if you go to rmld.com, under Board of Commissioners, and click on the supplemental attachment for their April 30th meeting. And the reason I mentioned that one, so there, you know, John did explain there are, there are two issues here that the commissioners will be voting on. One is extending the current arrangement with the payment we have, which is approximately $2.48 million through the end of the calendar year. Previously, it had been agreed to be kept until the end of the fiscal year for us, which is June. So that's, that's item one. Yes, exactly, that one, Mark. So, you know, Mark, I know you had worked to present some alternative proposals that would provide some guardrails. I know the commissioners and the cab were, had decided not to pursue those. They, those would have provided a bit of a minimum and a maximum for what the town could expect. So as we look at this chart here, what we see is that there is the possibility for fluctuation at the order of, you know, tens of thousands of dollars over the course of several years, depending on the usage that John mentioned. And there has been a decreasing trend in usage. The likelihood at this point, it's always tough to predict the future, but from everything I've heard at RMLD meetings, is that the likelihood of a drastic increase is not necessarily something we can rely on at this point in time unless there's some significant development in one of the four towns. There, like I said, though, there has been this downward trend, and I appreciate that the RMLD is investing in infrastructure and making sure that we get the great service, continue to get the great service that we do. But I am a little apprehensive about the changes, the numbers that are visible in this chart in that, over the course of, you know, approximately five years, that payment, depending on the impact of COVID by the end of the year and continued decreases, could see a drop of, you know, I'm looking here, $70,000 to the town budget. And that's a, that's a police officer, that's a teacher, that funds would need to be found elsewhere. So I appreciate that we're trying to reach a compromise here, but I'm a little nervous about what this means for our long-term budget impacts.
If I may?
Yes, John.
There's no question that there's, we can't guarantee the future. You can't guarantee the future. We can't guarantee the future. We are subject to perhaps even more variables than in town in terms of who we serve and whether they are part of the 20-year agreement, and whether we can continue to purchase the power at the rates we've been able to in the past, and whether we have any nationally major emergencies that would come in. Thereby, we have to be very physically conservative. I would argue that if you're looking out five years and seeing $10,000, $20,000, that's in the noise level. Um, that's in the noise level. We're talking 2.4 million, 2.5 million. And my hope is that we'll find ways during that period of time to make that a moot point. And we'll increase that number instead of decreasing that number. So, you know, the spreadsheets show one thing, the one thing I can only guarantee you. About these spreadsheets is that none of them are correct. Right? None of them are good. And as a matter of fact, if you were, the usual way we'd approach this is to do a Monte Carlo analysis and say somewhere in that cloud, there is a number that's correct. This is our sort of nearest approach to it, uh, to be able to at least show and get people's reasoned opinions about. Does this methodology work? And that's what we're really struggling with is trying to find a methodology that's simple, straightforward. And tries to, by the way, you'll notice that in the first year after 2020, excuse me, 2022, 22, 20, tongue tied, 2022. The number actually goes up. Right? So it goes up to 2.5 million in that particular year. So it can go either way depending on what the glitches are that are happening. And in each one of these cells, we have an explanation about what could happen and what could not happen. And we're, we're more than welcome to please, anybody who'd like to share their thoughts with us. Join us tomorrow, uh, plug and play. Uh, you want to try some different scenarios? No problem, but we've been around the block here for about two years. With not just Reading, but with the other three towns that we serve. And we have to be cognizant that, that, you know, they, they are 80% of the load. We're 20% of the load. So we had to be, we're all in this together and we're trying to work this out together. So it's, it's just. Hopefully that's a a reasonable explanation.
Go ahead, Ann.
Thank you very much, Sean, and thank you, Mark. I'm remembering the proposals that Mark had put together, uh, together with our capable town accounting staff. Um, and and I'm remembering the concept, one of the concepts that was, uh, that was utilized was looking at, I think it was called bands where you don't go. Above a certain amount or below a certain amount, kind of providing some amount of predictability and protection for both the town and RMLD. So I'm curious why that wasn't embraced or or what about that approach didn't work for RMLD?
The, um, part of the feedback we had gotten from the, uh, citizens advisory board. Was that they did not want it to be revenue based. Because there's so many different things that can happen or get to in a revenue based calculation. There are all kinds of variables that could be placed in it and, uh, changed, uh, if you will. Um, but if you dealt with something that was kilowatt hour based, then that's fine. Uh, because it's it's measured on the meters and there's no ambiguity associated with it. Uh, as far as having, um, the, um. What do you call them? The, uh, the guardrails, I believe that Vanessa had called them in terms of it. We didn't really understand what those guardrails were accomplishing. Because if you were in a situation where you had, let's say, three or four years worth of. Not minus one percent per year, but minus five percent per year. Because COVID came back and strong and, you know, we were in this for three more years, which is almost unimaginable. Then, you know, there, then, then quite frankly, all bets are off. I mean, it's not just the town that's suffering. RMLD can't maintain a surface level either. So having those types of guardrails in didn't really serve a purpose. And having an upper guardrail in terms of payment to the town, we thought was not good for you. Because if, if we do to get, um, you know, economic development, why would you want to have an upper guardrail? Why wouldn't you want to realize as much as you possibly could from the the methodology? And by the way, everybody would be happy because it means all of our kilowatt hour sales would be go up. All the three other towns in the above the line payment would also go up and rise. And it'd be great. I mean, everybody'd be dancing in the streets. So we didn't, just didn't see the logic of the guardrails is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, thank you for that feedback.
Sure. Other questions, comments?
Mark, yeah, um, not to, um, put words in Mark's mouth, but, um, when those were first put forward. The idea and, um, was to, um, essentially help protect the town from any sudden decrease. Um, something unpredictable like say COVID-19. Um, so that there would be some, um, consistency in what the town could expect. Because it is quite a bit of money, um, that the town does rely on. So, um, that had been the proposal. Uh, it apparently was, um, not of interest adversely, but, um, you know, I, I think. John is right, this is something we need to move forward with. Um, I, I think it's going to need to be revisited. Um, as we come out of COVID-19 and and see where this formula leads us. Um, you know, my concerns stand that this is, um. Uh, this could negatively affect our budget moving forward.
This, Vanessa, this is a compromise, you're absolutely right. And, you know, I find that in my business career over the last four years. Um, compromises are really kind of what you get to in negotiations and it's what keeps the enterprise going. Um, for having, you know, hard demands, one side versus the other, doesn't really move the ball forward. You have to compromise and and I think with our other three towns, uh, if they agree to this, um, and moving it forward. Uh, I think we'll be in very good shape. Um, and again, your, your point's exactly right. It can be reexamined, uh, at any point in time. So, um, it's, it's a way just to, to get off the dime. And do it a very logical, simple, easy to understand way and move it forward. And the, again, the previous methodology we use. It just ran out of steam. It just, it was bankrupting us, just couldn't keep it going. So it had to, we have to have a change. And so, uh, and notwithstanding, Mark did a fantastic job, by the way. We did look at spreadsheets and we went through it, but there are other compelling reasons. And that's why I said compromise, that it wouldn't be on a revenue basis.
Just if I could for a sec, just to kind of reiterate a couple of things. Um, we, we have been working on this to to come up with a, we think is a, you know, a solution that that can work at least for some period of time. You know, the, the one side of the story in in tonight was actually a really good example of kind of showing what that is, is that. Costs continue to go up no matter, kind of no matter what, even in the face of of things being really difficult financially. The costs continue to go up. The previous formulas that we had in place. Were were meant to understand that a little bit and to have some allowance that those costs are going to go up. And and that's how we'd set the adjustment mechanism. Um, you know, John talked a little bit about conversions and some other things going on. You know, their costs are going up, how things are managed. There, there are a lot of different things that go into that. Some of the proposals that we put forward focused on, um, looking at essentially. The need to have a cost escalator. And that's why revenue was the item that we were looking at. And, you know, I, I understand from from both sides of that what's going on. Um, you know, the net is that the, the money we're getting in real dollars, kind of, you know, adjusted for inflation and costs. We'll, we'll be going down a little bit under this formula. Unless demand goes up dramatically. And, you know, dramatically is more than just kind of, I think, new residential housing. I think it's, it's new substantial new development or 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 something else like that. So my, my take on this at this point is that, um, we do want to move something ahead. Uh, I think the idea, I, I like the idea of 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 bands very much and and not because it limited the top side. I can assure you, I'd love for it to go up. But because it kind of, it, it allowed us to do planning in a, in a pretty straightforward manner. Uh, knowing that it wouldn't go below a particular number. Again, you know, barring craziness that happens in the world. Um, and and that would have been an interesting approach as well. Uh, and, you know, the feedback, and I, and I have been involved in these meetings and listening has been so far from the other communities. Um, and the CAB, um, they, for some reason, revenue didn't bother them a bit. And it may be that over time, that's something that we should talk more about, but I think in the short term. It, it wasn't working for them. And so that's kind of what, kind of where I think we are at the moment personally.
Yeah, and and that's where we got to the, the whole issue of compromise, Mark. I mean, you know, in terms of trying to find something that everybody can live with. And and again, I, I, I know, I, I know you want predictability. By the way, as I mentioned in the beginning of this, if you, if the rates remain this constant. You, you would get accumulate to lead $300,000 more out of this. If it went positive, one percent even, it's significantly more than that. So on an upside, it's, it's very positive on the upside. And it's not as bad on the downside because we've got the three year weighted average working for us. Um, anyway, I'll, I'll stop there.
Mark.
We're going to be kicking this around tomorrow night. You're, anyone is welcome to join us, obviously. And we'd, we'd love to have your participation if you care to join us.
Karen had a comment then Bob.
Thank, thank you, John, and thank you, Mark. Um, so I do like the, the three year rolling average. Um, you never know what's going to happen or what's going to hit us. There's a lot of opportunity for us, um, around green energy usage and electrification. And so you're thinking, I'm thinking back 20 years ago. Gas was the clean energy. So it's been proven that is not the clean energy. Um, electric, our own RMLD is very, very clean energy. Doing like amazing things in terms of wind power, solar, hydro power, really, really being with the curve or ahead of the curve. And certainly, um, coming up to speed and matching what the state is doing and what states around the country are mandating. So there's tremendous opportunity here in a formula that does allow rewards for everyone who who goes down this path. And, um, I've attended CAB meetings and, you know, they, they care about the costs. They care about the payments for their budgets. Um, and those are kind of the primary drivers and they're, oh, excuse me, and the reliability and the service levels, which. Which are tremendous and remain so, so we're all lucky about that. Um, the question I wanted to ask our town manager, Bob Lullisher, to, um. Sort of weigh in on his thoughts because, you know, is this something that you can see? The town getting on board with and 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 looking for ways to use this electrification as a way to meet our, our green energy and clean energy initiatives?
I want to start by asking, um, both John and Vanessa have made the same statement, so I want to ask a question. Um, if, uh, lower sales have pushed you in this direction. Agree that the future is completely unpredictable. What has the past rate of decrease been roughly over some period of time? Three years, five years, 10 years?
Um, we'd have to, I'd have to defer to, uh, Colleen to give us the actual numbers. But the last maybe three years, there was about a one percent drop in two of the years and then it sort of stabilized. Uh, and that might be a reflection of the fact that people within our served territory have come to a certain level in the industrial front. Have put in as many adjustable frequency drives as they can. And people have already converted for the most part to LED bulbs, which came to, in which case it becomes relatively stable. And then that begs the question of, you know, what, what can we do to, to get more energy usage? And the big one, the big one by far is automobiles, right? And we, so we track that religiously in terms of the penetration curves of electric. And you can, you can probably find a curve for you, that satisfies you from four different sources out there. But the problem is it's still about five years away to have to have to make a very significant impact. Uh, so we're going through this period of, you know, the maintenance and the large maintenance, uh, that we have to put in place. Uh, the coronavirus impacting us, maybe our rates are, our usage is stabilized, don't know yet. Weather has a big impact. We had a mild weather, one of the warmest on record last year, which impacted us. But fall might be very cold. And this has happened time before. If there's one thing we're not going to do is predict the weather. Because even the, even the huge computers that the government uses can't predict the weather. So, so for us to pretend that we can, and then what it does, that balances things out actually in the system. So, uh, trying to answer your question, Bob, is what we've seen in the past is, you know, like a minus one, minus 0.8%. Then a stabilization in the last year. So will that stabilization move forward? We certainly hope so. Uh, but again, we can't tell you based on our knowledge base that it's going to. I can tell you in about five years to seven years, the number is going to be up dramatically. Because I do believe electric vehicles are going to be, uh, taking over from internal combustion.
I appreciate the answer, but I, I fail to understand your statement about it's been bankrupting us. Um, the CPI has been growing at less than one percent a year. So at worst, you're looking at a 2% loss a year, which is about $25,000 or $50,000. When this, when this was first presented to me over a year ago, it was a cut of a half a million dollars. Um, we've come a long way. So I just have never really understood the fundamental issue is my problem.
Well, why don't we take that offline, Bob, and we'll try to share that with you as some other, as some other point.
Excuse me?
We'd be happy to share that with you at some other time. Let's do it offline.
Well, this board as water sewer commissioners have a lot of the same issues you do. Uh, we're encouraging people to conserve water to, so we sell less. And then we have to, you know, the board has to raise rates. So we understand the theory quite well. And this board has to suffer the same things you do when there's conservation. Um, but it's really hard for me to make much of a statement long term because I really don't understand the issue.
Well, that's, that's the intricacies of being a utility.
Hmm, I'm pretty good at math.
There's a lot, lot more involved than just the math and running the utility.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, John, I'm, I'm curious, um, you know, as we talk about the, the financial situation of RMLD. Um, and and the bankruptcy statement sort of surprised me as well. But, um, you know, I know that the town, when we've been faced with, with financial constraints. Um, have had to make challenging staff cuts. I'm, I'm curious, um, the efforts RMLD has made in that regard.
In which regard? I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand.
In regards to staffing, have there been any staffing cuts?
Um, if anything, Vanessa. I, I understand. We're perhaps one of the most well run organizations in terms of a municipal, uh, in the entire state. We are still down about, I'll have to ask Colleen how many. But at least I would say five to six engineers that we've been trying to fill since forever. Uh, it's been very difficult. We are, we are understaffed, if anything, in running the organization. So there is, there is no place to cut, um, money out of the organization. Raising rates, of course, that's certainly a possibility as Bob was alluding to. Um, but, you know, our, the charter of the RMLD is to provide the lowest possible cost. And and the power that we receive is a pass through, right? So what we do is we have a staff that is superb at doing future purchases of power. And the reason we can do that is because it's four towns doing it in a group setting in a scale base rather than one town. If Reading were to try to do that just on their own, it would, it just wouldn't happen. The rates would skyrocket in terms of the electricity cost to all of our residents. We can do it because of scale issues.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, John. There, there's definitely a benefit in economies of scale. I think for those watching at home, um, who may not know, uh, as much about the history, it's, it's worth noting. Um, uh, the RMLD, um. While it operates as a separate entity, um, from the town of Reading and it obviously has its own, um, elected officials and the commissioners. Um, the town of Reading is, does have a liability from having the municipality owned utility. Um, and this is a liability that the other three communities who benefit from. The, the economies of scale that that John was talking about earlier, um, they, they don't share that. So that is another factor when we talk about the payment and why Reading receives it. Um, and that's a significant factor of it too. Um, so Mark, I, John, I, I really do appreciate you coming to the meeting and and putting the proposal in front of us so that the board could reflect on it. Um, Mark, I know there's numerous other things on the agenda, so I, I want to be sensitive to that. Um.
One comment, Bob, I didn't exactly get an answer to my question tonight, so, but if you want to.
I answered your financial question, what was the other part?
So we have a great opportunity with a large amount of influence over our local utility, which, uh, which national grade customers do not have. And we have a, a utility that is very interested in selling more kilowatts. And he, John's correct about the electric cars are coming and, and, um, you know, kudos, John, by the way. Thank you again for coming and kudos for the new rebate program that you're putting out there. If anybody's considering an electric lawnmower, you absolutely should get one, they are fantastic. And, um, so, so we can do a little persuading and and push Bob along this curve.
Good.
I haven't heard the question, are you asking us to buy more power?
Yeah, through electrification, yep. And meet our green, green.
Customers, that's been our mandate.
This is a topic, I think, that's a little separate from this discussion, but is worthy of another date. So in terms of our agenda for tonight, there are actually two topics related here. And John has talked about both a little bit. So the first part is the payment, which is what's now called the below the line. And that is going to be coming to a special meeting of the RMLD commissioners tomorrow evening. Is it 7 o'clock, John, or 7:30? Yes, it's 7 o'clock, 7 to 8 o'clock. And it's really to discuss this next formulation, basically, in terms of what it could bring and allow the commissioners to test it in different ways. And to see if it's the, if we're finally to a point where it makes sense to recommend this moving forward. Good, great. So if there are citizens. There's no, there's no motion tomorrow. Right, so it's discussion. So citizens that have interest in discussing this and bringing it up are certainly welcome to go participate in the meeting, send emails, however, to. Absolutely. Your concerns on that. So that's kind of piece one. Piece two relates to the 20-year agreement, which has a 10-year renewal cycle to it, I guess, is where it is. And so it has, it's come into the board. I don't know what the status is with other communities. I think that when I want to make sure that town council is able to take a quick look at it just to make sure there's nothing that we're. Mark, if I can mention, Wilmington did approve it. Wilmington did? Okay.
All three communities have approved it.
Okay, they have. Okay, so what it will require at some point is the signature of all of us. The select board will have to sign the document if we're in agreement with it. So not on tonight for a vote, but more for a discussion. And then I think we should just bring it to our next meeting. You know, unless anybody has other comments about it. Go ahead, Ian, I'm sorry. You're muted.
Bring it to our next meeting for a vote?
Yes. Yeah, I think any feedback we get from town council, but other than that, we should probably bring it forward. All right, anything else on this? We move on?
Mark, I just have, so I just want to comment. Bob, has Ray had a chance to review this? I'm assuming this is pretty straightforward, but.
I don't know, I don't know, actually. I haven't sent it to him. I easily do that and he can easily review it.
Yeah, why don't we do that just in case he has anything else? I can't imagine there's anything there to cause concern.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah. But just if we can have that.
Okay.
Check mark done before our next meeting, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Thanks very much.
Great, John, thank you for coming. Thank you very much, everyone. Much enjoyed it, thank you. A pleasure. Okay, let's go back on the agenda to discussion of liaisons. And in your packet was a summary and a suggestion that I put together that I'm going to try to put up on screen now as well. So what I did is, we had talked about what I call here in the left-hand column, formal liaison activities. And I think these are the ones that I wrote down. It started with the three basically priorities that each of us put in. And then there were some pieces that we were still working on and others where we expressed a preference, things like the audit committee for me and things like that. So I tried to summarize that here. And then I created, I guess, sorry, I'm using the terminology from before, the below the line. And the below the line is connection with chair and vice chair. Our discussion had been that there'd be a limited number of groups that we'd try to work a bit more closely with and monitor more closely. And then the other ones, although still, you know, quite important in the scheme of things, we'd establish a relationship with chairs and vice chairs so that they knew where to go if there were questions or comments. So what I, at that point, is I kind of just started shuffling the cards around a little bit to see what would make sense to be able to share the load between the five of us. And so this is what I came up with. Anybody have comments on what's here?
Mark?
Yes.
I'm not complaining, but am I on ZVA with Vanessa or are we taking it on together?
So we kind of left that as second person was a question mark.
Okay.
Is where we left it at the last meeting. So that's the reason I put it here.
Okay. I'm okay with everything that I see for me, unless someone wants to trade or do rock, paper, scissors, whatever.
Other. It's all right?
Thanks for putting this together, Mark, it looks good.
You're welcome. Is this something we need to formally vote on? Or is this something we just agreed to? Or how do we, how do we take this forward?
Before, moving forward, just one question. Where Vanessa and I are both communications, does that mean we anticipate continuing with the communications subcommittee? I just want to make, to confirm whether that's, if that subcommittee, we haven't voted to disband it, so I don't know if we need to vote to disband it? And then we can operate in separate silos?
Yes, so if I remember correctly from our last meeting, we agreed to disband it with one side being resident and town manager communication, the other side being social media. So I think, Mark, we need to put that as a separate agenda item to probably approve the final minutes.
Yes.
Disband.
Okay, minutes, disband, and then I'm going to call it restructure. But what I mean by that is your comment that there's kind of an internal communications and an external communications. And that those would be separated, or conceivably those are separated.
I don't know that I would classify them in that way. Because I think some of the communications that I would be looking at could also be considered external between the board and the public.
Okay, so board, staff, public, as opposed to more.
I'd say email communications with the board and communications with the town manager.
Bob, did I see your hand? Oh, I think you're just turning.
I just, I just wanted to add that past boards, some have voted on this, some have not. I don't think there's a right and a wrong. Quite often, the chair just sort of made an assignment.
These are okay. Let's do it.
Disagreements, I don't see that we necessarily need to vote. I mean, this all looks fine to me.
So we'll come back around the corner on communications.
All right.
Right, so we'll have to do that, and we'll have to do that at a future meeting. And we can come back and make adjustments here. That's my suggestion.
Mark, is next week, I know we'll discuss agenda items later, but is next week still to talk about our moving the social media policy forward page, or whatever you want to call it? Is that for next week?
Yeah, so I think next meeting. We should talk about that in a few minutes in terms of what it should be. But yes, and I was, I think, supposed to send something out, the three points. And I'm going to have to review the video to get the three points. And then I'll send it out after I had, I'm able to do that, sorry. That's on me. Okay. So the other thing I was going to suggest with this is that we do one more commercial advertisement for folks that want to volunteer, encouraging people that there are going to be lots of opportunities. We have lots of openings for volunteering on different communities. And we would love to get more community participation. And it's very easy, you can just go to the website. And down in this corner here in the yellow, you can see where it says volunteer opportunities. You can click on that and it takes you to volunteer opportunities. You go to volunteer application, there it is, it's online, you can send it in. And please indicate all the areas you might have some interest in. And just a little bit of background about you as to kind of who you are, why you might have some interest. Clearly, if there are folks who have some really good background in some of these areas, we'd love to tap your skills and bring it forward here. So thank you for that. Let's see. What else do I have on here? That was the RMLD. So before I jump to future topics, any more discussion on volunteers, you're okay? Oh, sorry, I was our caller first.
Caitlin, can you give us an update on the responses?
Yes, we are waiting for about six more responses, but other than that, we've heard from everyone.
And out of those, not including those six, is everyone re-upping?
No.
Oh, okay.
I don't have the exact number. Most are, but there's a few that have term limits that are expiring, and so they can't re-up. But most are, I will say, but there are a few that aren't.
All right, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, we wanted to kind of get a number by the end of this month, which is coming up, correct?
Yeah, so as close as we could, I think the deadline was that folks would have stuff in now. We're almost there. It sounds like we need to kind of wait one more, one more click.
Yeah, so Jackie started reaching out, doing like a double, our follow-up email. Yesterday, she sent out follow-up emails to the people we hadn't heard from, which was, I think, nine people. And then out of the nine, we had like three or four respond right away. So then we're just down to the last few.
Yep. And in terms of timing, other than finance committee, would these appointments take place? Is it for July 1st? Is that the?
July 1, all the terms expire on June 30.
Okay.
Caitlin, I'm also curious, for the vacancies, have we received applications for the vacancies that we currently have?
We have, we got a few for finance committee. I would have to check on any others. I haven't seen many come through. We got one tonight, actually, but I didn't see what committee it was for. But we have not gotten very many. We have a few for FinCom.
So I think we need to do a bit more advertising before we close all the nominations, I think is what it sounds like here. So I think we should talk this up as much as we can, encourage people to get engaged. There are all different boards, committees, opportunities. And we'd love for people to, you know, make this either one of your first entrees into local government. It's kind of not a heavy lift to get into it. Or for folks who have been involved before, please come back. We're looking for folks that want to be helpful here and care about the town, taking it forward and want to participate that way. So please, please send in your applications. Future topics. So we talked a little bit more about public comment being something that we want to get onto the agenda. The communications policy may not be exactly right, but it's your point, Carlo, and it's also your points, Ian and Vanessa. It's communications, all aspects. And we probably want to break that into some pieces. We need to hear from Sharon Anstrom at some point and get the quarterly report. We probably should do that sooner. It's not critical instantly, but I think that's something we want to get there. Capital plan and priorities, especially given recent changes. But it's very important to talk about priorities, I think, how we see some of the priorities. And we've also talked about how to gather public input about some of those priorities. So I think that should be an agenda item that we can talk through and then maybe even assign a person to think about it and come back with ideas on how to get that going. Obviously, having some hearings would be a great way to do it. But even before that, we can certainly ask people to start, we can share with them, here are some ideas, and ask them to give us some feedback. Last but not least on this was, I call it town meeting task force, but this was just a notion of looking at some different technology options. Nominally, I'm, I think I'm kind of leading that at the moment, but trying to get some folks involved, thinking about what are the different remote participation options? I did bring it up at the command meeting on Monday. And obviously, if there's anything other than just remote, they need to be very involved in that. Understanding what it is, they have a planning structure in place, and they need to be very engaged. So, you know, good that we're having the discussion. I think the group was okay exploring technology, but when it gets to people in buildings, they absolutely want and need to be involved. Anything that I haven't put on here that you see kind of next few meetings or even beyond?
Mark, is there an RMLD vote placeholder in May? The last time it was agreed to, it occurred on May 16th, like mid-May.
Yes, that needs to be there.
Okay. I didn't know if I missed it, if you already had it on.
No, it needs to be there, thank you, Karen. Sorry, I can, actually, I can put this back onto the screen, hang on. Sorry, I just have too many windows open at the moment.
Mark, while you're searching, I'll put in a plug. We normally do the PTTF meetings quarterly. We did get an email earlier today from someone on a topic, on a street safety topic that has come before the board previously. I hesitate to put that on too soon, given the heavy workload that police and fire already have, and we rely heavily on them for these updates. So perhaps not immediately, but something to keep on our radar.
Yeah, but maybe you could come back to us with a suggestion on when the timing would be good for that?
Well, the PTTF typically meets monthly. We haven't met in two months, and we don't plan to meet for another month at least. So we need to meet before we can discuss it with you. But that doesn't mean, police is aware of the complaint, aware of the issue. They have gone and done some surveys, will continue to do that. I guess my only comment in public at this point, which is a typical one in many parts of the town, is sometimes residents don't know that the street they live on is a 30 mile an hour speed limit by default. And 30 can seem quite fast in neighborhoods with little kids. So it's, it could be unsafe, it could be seem unsafe, but that doesn't mean that someone's actually speeding. Just to keep that in mind.
It's worthy of investigation. I know this neighborhood fairly well.
Yes. Another thing for your agenda is water and sewer hearing.
Yeah. Again.
I would love for us to be able somewhat soon, maybe by June, to have a board retreat led by Jane, if she's available and interested in doing that for us again, where we can talk about ground rules for how we interact with each other as the board and represent the community, as well as setting goals for ourselves and keeping ourselves accountable to those goals. I think it's also, this, we may be waiting on something from right here, but to talk about, about a policy for public hearings, not, I think, not entirely unrelated. We had, I think, early on in this pandemic, talked about boards, commissions and committees not meeting unless, unless necessary. But this is going to be going on for a long time. It already has, and it very well built for a long time. And so, and we have a lot of technology in place. And so I don't know if that was a kind of our initial frame as we started getting up and running with our own meetings. But I don't know if, you know, as liaisons to these other boards, commissions and committees now, we're still saying, I would, I would actually encourage us to allow boards, commissions and committees to meet if there's business, if they have business to attend to. If they don't, certainly, it's, you know, not necessary to meet just for the sake of meeting. But if there is business to attend to, I think we're going to have to move forward.
Yeah, I think you actually may have two issues there, though. One of them is just the meeting itself that takes place of the board and committee. The other is actually having a public hearing take place.
They are, they are different, but somewhat related.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and I think you're right. I think the notion that suddenly, you know, in 30 or 45 or 60 days, you know, we're back to normal and everybody comes into the room, doesn't seem likely at all.
Right.
So, yeah, I think we need to come up with a structure for that, maybe some guidelines. And ideally, even a bit of a how-to, a structure. It probably makes sense. And as we're learning more about town meeting and different things, it may be that we're starting to hear what other people are doing, what the state is supporting, things like that. Anything else? Anything else? Good for now. Okay. I'm gonna take this off. So we have some, uh, minutes to look at.
Mark? Um, I have some edits to the minutes for a couple of these meetings, and I apologize, I I haven't had the opportunity to send them in writing, which is, um, easier, I think, for everyone involved. Could I ask if we could review these at our next meeting? So that I could include my, um, so I could send my edits to Bob directly?
So to me, yes, and, and had an idea that I think has a lot of merit to think about. Anne, do you want to share?
Sure. So I sent this to Bob, Caitlin, and Mark immediately prior to the meeting. But as I was going through the minutes, um, I was, I was feeling for Caitlin, who's had to put these together. And as someone who has, myself, had to put together meeting minutes, um, for, uh, in compliance with the open meeting law, um, in my, as part of my day job. Um, and there generally are kind of two approaches for the way you can put meeting minutes together that are fully compliant with open meeting law. One, where you provide kind of like a summary level uh, overview of what was discussed, you're, you know, you make certain that you indicate what decisions were arrived at and who voted it in what way. Um, and then another where you attribute, you know, statements to different commissioners or board members, um, as best you can, um, and try to provide a very detailed summary of, um, what people said when. And I'd say the latter can, can become contentious and open to, um, more dispute than the former. Um, and I, as I was going through the draft minutes, I was kind of struggling because I would have written them differently, or I would have paraphrased things in a different way. And, you know, I could do, I could probably do a lot of redlining of those minutes for me to feel comfortable with feeling like they pro- provide an accurate summary of what, what went down, not to, not to, um, put blame on Caitlin, because it's a thankless and difficult, difficult task to put these minutes together. Um, but, you know, I was, I was looking at the minutes and, you know, thinking I would probably change some of the the paraphrasing of, um, you know, different things that were said in public comment. But that feels uncomfortable, because then you're trying to figure out how to represent something that members of the public were saying, and they're not here to vote on the minutes either. Um, so I kind of wanted to offer up a slightly different approach to, to, to our minutes, um, where we might think about having more of like a summary level conversation that doesn't require. Well, I, you know, I think often we all go back and look at minutes and say like, well, I didn't quite say it in this way, and then we'll edit our own comments. Um, but maybe we could provide more of like, this was what, this topic was discussed at the meeting. Um, you, you know, these viewpoints were represented. Um, th- these decisions were reached, and, um, these votes were taken, and the members voted in this fashion. Um, so I, I just wanted to offer that up. Um, I, if we do want to go for more of the detailed approach, I too will also have to send, um, Caitlin, uh, notes or corrections, which I didn't, um, do prior to this meeting. I think I, I I provided her, Bob, and Mark, um, that sort of frame as, as a, as a possibility. Um, and I, I think I only offered up one, uh, specific example of of a correction I would make. But I, I would have more if we do want to go to the, to, um, the detail, um, level in our minutes.
How do people feel philosophically about the structure, Karen?
Mark, I have a comment and a question. Um, so the comment is, in this day and age, when we can go back and look at the video online, I, we could give Caitlin a break, and exactly, everything's there. We're not losing the data. RCTV does a great job of capturing this. Anybody can go through and watch it and relive it, like, multiple times. And, uh, this is good for the finance committee, the select board, CBDC, a number of committees. So I, I, I like Anne's approach. Um, and the question I have is, um, this has come up on the finance committee before, but how does the select board do have new members vote on minutes where they weren't participants as board members?
So, uh, maybe we'll talk about the former first. Actually, talk about the latter first. Um, so we've left it open. Um, you can, uh, either abstain. What's happened is people either have abstained, or they have voted to approve. I don't think I've ever experienced someone vote against the minutes after not having been there. And we, it has been, to my knowledge, uh, left up to people to decide what they want to do without any prescription given. Is that pretty much it, Rob?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Karen, to give you a little perspective, I've abstained from voting for minutes in meetings that I didn't attend, and for one reason or another, didn't watch. Um, and I have voted for minutes in meetings that I didn't attend, but, um, uh, did watch in hindsight and agreed with. So it's, it doesn't have to be a hard and fast. And as for, um, the other issue, Anne, I, I think that's a great idea. I'm fully on board with simply having, um, factual summaries of what was discussed, issues raised, and how we voted. I think it would save Caitlin a lot of work.
Carla, what do you think?
I'm a, I'm a little confused. Are these for the minutes that we need to approve, or this is going forward forever?
Yes.
I asked two.
Both, both.
Um, you know, I'm new to this. I was live for those three meetings, and I read all the minutes. And they were very detailed, and I've read minutes from other meetings. So I, I don't want to disparage Caitlin. I understand what Anne is saying, but I, I, I'm a little uncomfortable, and maybe because of the subject matter, uh, that is bringing this on. But I, I like the way it's been done, and yes, we do have video, people were there in person, board members were there in person, but I, I don't know where this is coming from, other than maybe the subject matter.
Well, I think that there'll be a number of amendments to the minutes if we kind of continue with them in the detailed form. Um, I, I too would have some comments and and suggestions on changes that should be made and what's there now. So we could approach it as, okay, that's what we should continue, and then we'll kind of, I'll go through our edits, uh, at a future meeting. And then we could continue with that path. The notion, however, was, what if we instead moved toward, uh, doing more of a summary form? And and focused on what are the issues, what were the comments, what, what's the subject matter of the comments that were brought up, what votes were taken? Um, and then it would be a, a, a shorter set of minutes with the ability to check the exact information on video.
Well, every, every meeting's minutes are going to be different, right? Though, some of those meetings were pretty intense that were on the agenda tonight, and most meetings are not intense at all, or very boring. And the minutes, the minutes are done, the minutes are done in a matter of minutes. So it's one thing to correct if Caitlin didn't transcribe something correctly or misquoted somebody, but to go and amend minutes just for the sake of amending them, I really don't agree with.
Well, so the problem with that is that if, if we as board members don't agree with what was written, we're not going to vote to approve them.
I, I understand that, but I'm saying, it, it's, a correction is a correction. That's fine. I, I didn't say that, or I, I meant to say this, and, you know, everything's in hindsight. But I, I mean, this is part of our job. I mean, from, from what I understand, um, I don't, I don't, I don't really understand what's going on.
So from experience in the past, um, it's a bit of a painstaking process that involves members oftentimes checking their own statements and other things, and it, it taking several weeks to get minutes to a, a place where everyone was okay with them. So that could be an approach. It just, it's going to take longer to get that done. That, that is what we've done in the past. Um, and it's been painstaking in some cases. I think what Anne's suggesting is a different approach, um, but it would be consistent, you know, across activities. And I don't think it was meant to say, geez, for these meetings, let's not do it that way. I think it's, it's the suggestion. I won't put words into your mouth, Anne, but that this is how we would handle minutes going forward, too.
That, I think that would be my preference.
Anne, did I also, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Anne, would this also translate to other boards and committees? And or they do their minutes the way they want to do it?
They would do, I think they would do it the way they want to do it.
I, we should check this, but I believe the school committee does it in the summary format.
That's a great question, Carol.
Yeah.
I've seen this discussed at, um, the Mass Municipal Association as well. Uh, and many other towns also do the abbreviated version. The minutes are not really intended to be a transcript of what happened. They are meant to be a summary record of the actions and decisions that were made by the board. Um, and, um, the issue of editing minutes, um, has been ongoing. And I remember even on my FinCom days, um, you know, members making slight adjustments um, to information that was presented. It's, you know, Anne's absolutely right. It's, it's a really tough job. It is thankless. But it's also important to have that accurate record. Um, but I, I think because of the technology and because we have videos that are maintained indefinitely on YouTube, I don't know if we need this level of detail. I, I hadn't thought of it before. I, I think it's a great idea.
Is there a level of?
That's someone who has had to be a minute taker. It does save a lot of time for the minute taker. I don't know if.
I might raise my hand to be a minute taker if this is how we're gonna do it.
Is there a level of detail that is, um, is acceptable? In other words, you know, if it just kind of said.
Provide certain, there's certain information under open meeting law that is required to be included within the minutes. And so you can't shortchange that.
So just, would it make sense to try it for a set of minutes and see what it looked like? So we actually can understand what it would be?
Yeah, I, it's, I noted, actually, I think, to Bob, um, Caitlin, and Mark, that some of the minutes from one of the meetings, um, actually, not the entirety, but one portion of it, on one agenda item, effectively utilized the approach I'm talking about, where we, um, talked about the town manager's evaluation. Um, and Caitlin, I think, used about two sentences to summarize that conversation, which is totally adequate for purposes of open meeting law, and was accurate and reflective of, of that portion of the meeting. But it was like an hour-long conversation that was summarized accurately, um, by Caitlin in those, uh, two sentences. I think it was about two sentences.
So, Mark, you had suggested, um, giving it a try for some of the minutes to see what it looks like. I, I think that's a really good idea. Anne, would you be able to share what the, as an experienced minute taker, uh, under open reading law, would you be able to share the requirements with Caitlin, um, so that we could do a draft?
Well, aware of them, but I'd be happy to, to share that, because I know she's very diligent about providing, you know, people who are members, present members, absent, like that kind of thing is, is required. And I know Caitlin always does a good job of doing that, um, but I can certainly share that, and maybe with the board. So, um, in a future, for a future packet or something, so everyone knows what's required.
I would, yes, we, we, we do that. I, I mean, I don't think I'm in a position to say, yeah, let's definitely change. I don't, I just need to see what it might look like and understand if, if that seems to be sufficient or not.
I just want to add that this isn't so much a select board issue, but it is the land use boards. Um, there is more precision, precision desirable and sometimes required in public hearings. Um, because if there's future litigation, they go back to the minutes as the record, not the tape of the meeting, quite often. So sometimes there's more detail required. This person said this, you know, and a butter said that. Uh, again, that's not your issue so much, but you can't, you can't necessarily dictate policy to all the land use boards, for instance. And I, and I know you said you didn't intend to.
That was, I, I was not thinking about dictating how other boards, commissions, or committees take their minutes.
I don't think there's too many public hearings that you will have that are going to be that kind of an issue, but there could be. Um, you know, if we had a poll hearing or something, that'd be much like a land use, uh, issue. So just, just be aware of that possible exception.
And we could make that, if, if this summary format works, we could make hearings the exception.
Yeah, I, I need to see what this is going to look like. I'm really, you know, I know this is the first time we're talking about it. And, you know, um, Karen and I are the newest members in the boards, but Karen has been on other boards, so she, maybe she's more familiar with this than I am. But I've been to enough meetings and read enough minutes that, you know, I know it's tedious. And like I said, some are more tedious than others, and, uh, I'm just a little worried that we're using this point in time of February uh, for a few meetings that were totally changing the way we do things. So I just want to make sure that there's a good reason to do this, and that we're all in agreement and not in agreement for the wrong reason. I, I don't want to just do something just to do something to make it easier for Caitlin. Nothing against Caitlin. But I, 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 you know, I, I haven't gone through minutes yet as a board member. I, I, I have minutes of, I, we have minutes of our, our, our meetings, uh, since March seventeenth, but there's not much to go over, um, so far.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that, Carlo. I was, you know, I came to this sort of late in the day today when I was looking at, um, looking at the minutes and starting to go through the task of, um, looking at corrections to offer, and they were numerous. And will, you know, if we go forward, it will be painstaking and painful to go through them. Um, and it, it sort of ilus- it illustrated for me the benef- and having, like I said, having done, taken minutes in both fashions before, it sort of illustrated for me, um, the benefit of, of taking minutes and approving minutes in a way that, you know, it's just totally straight, it's much more straightforward as to everyone being able to agree on the accuracy. Um, when we're not trying to, you know, paraphrase what somebody else said and see if it's an accurate reflection of, of their intent. And it, it's a, it's a, it's a challenge to try to capture that. Um, and, and all, I think particularly when I was looking at, um, members of the public who had spoken, and my recollection, and I'm looking, going back and looking at the video and thinking it didn't quite line up with my, what I had heard and what they'd said. Um, but then it felt uncomfortable to think about rephrasing what the public had said and offering a correction there. Although for me to feel comfortable in approving the minutes as an accurate reflection, I would have to offer those corrections, but it's, it felt, uh, inherently, uh, uncomfortable. Not that, not that you, everything we have to do has to be comfortable, certainly. Um, but it seemed like unnecessarily uncomfortable.
Right, and that, that's kind of my point. I mean, we, there was a lot of public input at, at those particular meetings, or a few of them. It, it's, if every meeting was like that, then I would say this is a great discussion to have. But that was an anomaly that should never happen again, in my opinion. And hopefully it will never happen again. But, and I'm happy to discuss this further and, and put it to bed tonight and, and see what you sent, um, to Bob and to Mark. But, you know, I, I'm not going to make a decision, but I, I just don't like where this is going.
Mark, can I recommend that we do a test run, if you will, um, to review at our next meeting?
Yeah, I think that would make good sense, and take a look at what, what the summary might look like, um, as an option. I think we can also, um, start the process of, of kind of, uh, looking at, at some of the comments that people would have and kind of understand this. The, um, this isn't the first time this has come up, just to be clear. So I remember many meetings last year, my first year, where it, it took us weeks and weeks to get minutes approved, because there were changes that had to be made, and people had to review the tape and go back and forth. It took weeks and weeks to get stuff done. So it's not that it's a one-time thing that's never happened before this way. I'd say last year, there, there were a handful, at least, of times where we went through things like that. So, um, that, you know, the impetus would be, is there a better way to do it? And if there is, we should talk about it. Um, if it's too high a summary, my concern would be that somebody going back and looking at the minutes is, is, you know, we talked about the RMLD. Wouldn't be sufficient, in my view, as a summary. Doesn't capture anything other than what was already in the, in the packet. So that, that wouldn't serve its purpose. But if it went through and said, this was the discussion, and these are the points that were raised, and, uh, you know, no action was taken, or the next action is a vote, that would work for me. I, I don't need to know, you know, Karen said this, John said. I, I don't need to know, you know, Karen said this, John said that, Anne said this, Mark said that, Vanessa said this. I don't need that necessarily.
I, I think it depends on the topic. I, I disagree. I really think it depends on the topic. I think to summarize someone's comments that were very specific is not fair. I'd rather be specific than summarize something that was very specific.
Right, so that means actually going through the tape to be that specific and, and not interpreting. Just, just to be clear, that, that's the level of detail that, that I think you're talking about. If it's going to be an accurate reflection, it's based on the tape. It's based on what was said exactly.
Right, and that's the.
I feel like we're going in circles here.
Yeah, we're back with a transcript and it's not a transcript. So I, I, I think we're, we're not ready to, to kind of make a decision. So, and I think appropriately, I think it'd be great to take a look at a version, um, in summary form. And we can kind of assess, is it accomplishing the goal or not? Um, and then I think we also should, could think about some of the edits we're going to make and, and, you know, we'll see what happens when we bring the edits together. Um, and usually what we've done, I think, is we've tried to make our own edits and send them to Caitlin and then ask her to try to make sense of them and, and bring them together.
Should we do go through that ex- exercise?
I, I think we should do it for one of them. Um, you know, pick a date, uh, and, and go through it and start the process and see what it looks like. And, and, you know, maybe it's simple. My, my gut is it's not going to be so simple. But let's, I think we got to start with that. I think we can't just kind of make a change until we're comfortable with it.
Um, can I ask then that the word documents for those three meetings be sent to us so that we can do it and track changes?
Yeah. Yep, yep, great.
I have a question. Um, so am I, are you asking me to rewrite the minutes in a summary version? Or are you asking me to do like our next set of minutes as a summary version and see what it looks like? Because I have done all of your minutes up until this meeting. They're all done, just like waiting. Um, so are you asking me to go back and like rewrite all of those? Or are you wanting me to start this going forward or?
I, I would suggest we take one only and try the summary format and see what it looks like and compare it to the, the, the longer form of it. And so we can get a flavor for what's there and that will help us assess what do we want to do here?
Would we want to take? Would we want to take one of the me- meetings that, that's in this packet? And, um, do the sort of line by line edits? And then would we want to have, rather than Caitlin have to do it? Do you want me to try to do a summary level versions so we can take it off Caitlin's plate?
If you wouldn't mind trying one, that would be great.
Okay.
And then let's just see what we have and then we can, we can talk about it. And we have a, a little bit of a comparison. And if it merits changing, we can discuss that. And if it doesn't merit changing, you know, I think we should also kind of do a red line version of the ones that were in the packet tonight.
Okay.
All right, so, so Anne will take it for one meeting. Bless you. And we will each, uh, kind of take what was in this packet tonight. We'll, if you can send us Caitlin just the word versions of them as opposed to the PDF.
I mean, I don't mind doing that. I was just wanting to make sure that we're on the same page.
Yeah, we, we, I think we're trying to see what would it look like? And it doesn't mean doing all of them. It means trying it with one so that we can take a look at it and, and see if, if there's, there's agreement or not.
So which meeting, which meeting do you want me to do?
Are there preferences? Do we take the hardest or do we take something in between?
I think it should be chronological. We, I think we were having three, to approve three, uh, meetings tonight. If I'm, I don't have it in front of me, but was it three?
Yeah, I think there are three, three sets, yeah.
I mean, chron- chronolo- I mean, I don't know, chronologically, because we, that's how we would approve them. Chronologically, right? We don't jump from, we just pick one and approve it, then go backwards and forward. We go in order.
Were we just testing this? Like, are we, am I doing this to be, have them approved? Are we doing this just to see if we like how it comes out or?
So I, I, I think we're, we're seeing side by side. The ideal is to have a side by side comparison and we can look at two sets and see the two versions and, and decide if there's a, if we prefer one version over the other or how we want to take it going forward. So to see it one time gives us that opportunity. One time meaning one set of minutes.
Okay, yeah, I'll just start with the first one then, the, um.
Two, four?
Two, is that what it is, two, four?
I think it's two, four.
Um, and then I just have one more, um, clarification point. When, um, you guys talked about like public comment, um, do you want me summarizing other people's public comments too? Or is that something you want me to leave? I try to, I try to, when I do public comment, um, I'm always trying to walk a fine line of too much and not enough. Um, but I feel like when I do public comment, I try to write pretty close to exactly what they say because I don't want to write something that they didn't say. But do you want, are you want me to summarize their comments as well? Or, um, do you want me, like, would you rather me put more for theirs? Plus any preference?
I, I think you're touching exactly on the topic.
I know.
In some sense that we're, we're, we're dealing with.
Okay.
You know, when, when it's part, yeah. Well, I think let's, let's start with what you already have done, most importantly, right? Let's start with that. Let's take the two, four minutes, February four minutes, try it in summary form and look at them side by side and see what, what we like and don't like about one format versus the other. In the meantime, I think from two, four, to 11 and two, 19, I think those are the three dates. I think that, uh, each of the board members should take a look at them. And if you've got red line comments, once we get a word version, red line it. Send it back and, and, and let's see, you know, if, if, if it's really easy and, and, you know, everybody agrees, great. But that may not be what happens, we'll see. Is that all right with everybody?
Yes.
Yes, just, I just wanted to offer, uh, to do the summary version for two, four. If that's going to be, um, additional burden for Caitlin.
Hey, if you want to do it, more than welcome, but I don't mind, um, doing it.
We ask you to do it, please Caitlin, for two, four. Just, and then send the red line version, sorry, not the red line, the word versions of two, four, two, 11, two, 19, the three that are in the packet tonight. Send those out to the board members. If you have changes, do it in, uh, turn on review and put in your red line comments. All right. Um, let's talk about timing for the next meeting. So, um, town staff is going to be very busy over the next couple of weeks in particular, but next singular week, uh, in, in very much particular. And Bob had asked a question, you know, is there anything that we feel we have to cover next week? Or could we postpone, uh, to, two weeks from tonight? And, um, from my perspective, I don't think there's anything that has to happen next week unless there are some significant changes in legislation or, or, or other activities like that. That, that's my gut on things. How do other people feel about that?
I'm, I'm sorry, do you mean, so we don't meet next? Is that what you were referring to? We, we wait, uh, skip a week?
Right, skip one week.
Okay, just to point out though, that I think many of you have agreed or want to attend the Tuesday night meeting and virtual meeting with other select board members. Just forward the agenda, I got it. There's no way you're going to do this in one night. You're going to be at it for days. It's a very long agenda.
The one that was proposed already that Mark put up?
Yeah, we just got it from Wakefield.
Oh, that, oh, that, that.
So the board, you know, if, if you have a quorum, the board may be meeting next Tuesday.
Right.
Got it. So if something that is critical that we need to deal with will already be, uh, posted in that quorum.
You could, yeah.
Yeah.
This is a very long meeting.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We're 10:34, sorry about that. So, so.
Yeah, I, I meant.
Oh, you looked at the, uh, agenda?
Yeah.
Tonight's long.
So, so here's the question. Is it okay with the board? We do not meet next Wednesday unless there's some, uh, very important reason why we have to call the meeting quickly. So we, we do not plan a meeting at this point until two weeks from tonight.
Did you put that slide up again? Just sorry for the topics that we were discussing, sorry.
Yeah, and, and these, by the way, aren't all necessarily, um, on one night.
No, right, right. No, I just want to, yeah, that's all. Yeah, no, I, I, because I know you, I know you mentioned, Mark, that, you know, you want to get the town accountant report, you know, sooner than later. Um, I, I thought we agreed, all of us, to do the RMLD vote next week? I thought we agreed upon that, maybe I'm, I'm wrong?
Well, we said next meeting.
Oh, next me, okay, I, I thought you said next week. Okay, next meeting. So there's no time constraints for that? We're good right now?
It should be fine.
Yeah, it has to be in May.
Oh, okay, all right. I'm just, that's why, I want, that's why I wanted to see this.
They asked us to do it before their next board meeting and usually they meet around the 21st or in the 20s. So that the 13th should be fine for the RMLD decision.
Yeah, I think that, um, water and sewer, we talked about doing after the, uh, the FinCom meeting anyway, and before June 15th. So that could conceivably wait. You know, board retreat, um, again, you know, some, some of these things are, are sooner than later, but, you know, it, it, a week doesn't, I think, make the difference. Public hearings, we probably need a little bit of guidance from Ray, but I think he probably needs guidance from us too. So what our expectations are.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just, I just get nervous the more we, I know we're meeting weekly and, you know, I was one of the ones who suggested that during this, uh, crisis and pandemic and, and I'm totally okay with it. And I, I think it's, I'm, I, I'm, I think the public is happy that we're doing it. I hope they are. And I'm glad we have, we're getting a lot of participat- participation from Command and, and Board of Health. And I think it's really informative. And I just, I don't want to kick the can down the road too far, even though it's two weeks. And, and then we have to start thinking about town meeting. We're going to have a lot on our plate on how we, you know, even though that discussion is the end of May, I was hoping it wouldn't be that long and, and other things too, that if we don't meet next week and even try to cover half of these and not knowing what else is going to come up. Or maybe we cherry pick, cherry pick a few of these off and make it a really focused meeting. I don't know if anyone's open to that, but, you know, I, I want to go Tuesday night because I really want to get this public hearing thing. Uh, Wakefield is having full meetings every two weeks. They have not stopped town government during this, uh, virus. So I'm not saying we have to do that, but we can't just keep on doing nothing. Um, we have really have to move the ball forward away to say that, you know, have seven to 11 o'clock meetings for months and months and months. Um, so I would love to pick a few things off this list for next week. That's my personal opinion, but, um, one of five, um, and just to move the ball forward. And I think public hearing, uh, maybe we'll get some guidance Tuesday night. Maybe we won't from what other towns are doing. But I know for a fact Wake, Wakefield is having full hearings and, and getting things done. Um, but I'll leave it there.
Mark, can I suggest that you discuss this with Bob and see what's reasonable? And move it forward from there?
Yeah.
Again, we're going around in circles.
Yep, yep, I think that's fine. Okay, and any other last opinions? And then I'll take it offline. Nope, okay. Um, I think we've covered everything we planned to for the evening. Carlo, do you have a, a motion?
What's today's date again?
I gotta check my phone, 29.
Sorry, motion to adjourn the meeting on April 29.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, okay, voting around the circle, Karen.
Um, I.
Yes, to adjourn.
Yes, I.
Anne? Carlo?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
And Mark, yes, we are adjourned.
Thank you.